Okay, hello everyone and welcome to the April thirtieth town board meeting. The town board has been an executive session discussing matters of retirement and hiring in particular departments and taking advice of council. So may have a motion to close the executive session and open a joint meeting with the park and recs department and the recreation commission and the town board.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Do you guys need to open in any way officially?
I don't think so. I'm not sure what the protocol usually is, so.
No, okay, that's fine. We don't have to. It's your protocol. You absolutely don't have to.
You know, whatever, uh. Yeah, I know.
So um we can go around the room, the table and introduce each other. As you know, Vicky Tip, I'm town supervisor.
Ally Shemtav.
Ikuzios, Superintendent Recreation and Parks.
Jensalon.
Jessica Lamont.
Aaron Spira.
Jim Klein, Town Board.
Klein, House Town Board.
Gerald Misseland, Town Board.
Okay, so we have a pretty robust agenda today. Thank you for joining us. We have a lot of important matters to discuss and I'll just let people know a general idea of our agenda. We'll be discussing a child abuse prevention policy, introducing a new software registration system and the costs associated with it. We'll be discussing summer camps, residency policy and enrollment and staffing, uh which will encompass the TOTS camp, camp adventure and camp on the go. And I think that about covers everything for today. So we'll start with the child abuse and prevention policy. And I hope everyone's had a chance to to take a look at it. We drafted it along with the help of our attorney and sent it to you. And um so we would like to have your feedback.
Um so I just, I have just a general, couple of general questions. One is more of a assumption. I'm assuming that this will go to everyone, so is this going to staff?
Yes.
Um.
It it and if you actually read the definition of agents, it includes employees, volunteers, right?
Volunteers. So when we, so for any of the coaches that we bring on, um we'll have to have have them sign this as well.
Sign acknowledgements as well, yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify just in case.
No, no, and it's a, it's actually really good question. Thank you. Um so this is an update to our policies and procedures that we have as employees of the town, uh where there's a handbook that we ask all of our employees and our volunteers to go through and acknowledge. Um and this is an update of this particular module. Um it has, Joan, you wanna sit by the table because there's no, um there's no microphone over there.
There's a spot right here, creep.
Hmm, so much stuff. Alright, try to come in.
I will tidy my corner.
No, no, that's okay, that's okay, yeah, didn't even bring you. Here we go. Um so we came to our attention um that there wasn't a clear line of reporting when incidents occurred. And in order to take and just clean that channel of communication up, we asked um our labor council to actually go through it and and tighten it up. And what what we've presented, we hope, um this evening is a very clear, concise, step-by-step explanation of if if what is child abuse and if it's suspected or um it's reported as child abuse or you receive this information, what are the clear steps that you need to take? Uh and basically, the steps are gonna be that that it's going to be reported to Ike and or Christine Gray. It's gonna come to me and then it's as town administrator, um and then it will go to our council and the town board. Um we appreciate the um very hard work that our volunteers at the rec commission um uh do every day, but asking, having them uh be enmeshed in a a child abuse allegation or rumor or it it's just, it's not appropriate. So what we'd like to do is take it out of your hands and get it to our labor council as soon as possible so that we're under their advice and they can guide us as to what the next steps are. Um you know, you you guys were put in a very uncomfortable and untenable position. We want to make sure that that we can, and we apologize for doing that, so.
And just so also that people know what what to expect, so that the parent community also knows what to expect
Exactly.
when an incident happens. So basically, an agent, which is someone who is a responsible party in the program, would report to the superintendent or deputy superintendent. Then they report to you, then um you would commence an investigation or rather Ike would then commence an investigation um with the agent helping out regarding the report that they've made. And then there's consultation with the town council. Then there would be an alert to the town board and the parents would be notified in writing of any results of the investigation and remedial actions taken. And the parents could then appeal to the town administrator. So you would then make a decision and again notify the town board and the parents could appeal and would then appeal to the town board. So, Lino, is that basically?
That's correct.
Those are all the steps regarding, you know, the rest of of the process.
Right, and and this um this policy will be on our town website. So not only do we all know what the right steps are, but when parents take in, you know, they wanna know, make sure that that things are being followed and that that rules and regulations are in place, they will, I'm hoping, be comforted by the fact that we have a policy, we have procedures. We we will get to the bottom of it.
Uh your question ahead is, someone here says about filling out an incident report. Is that something that will be created or, cause the only incident reports we have right now pertain to accidents or injuries.
Accident reports, yeah, that's different. I I will, yes, there will be an incident report. I will speak to Lance about that.
So. Okay.
As an exhibit, yeah, that's good, thank you.
Alright. Yeah, so we have that.
And make that available on the site, website, just click in.
Yeah. So there is um an acknowledgement that we would have everyone sign, so that's gonna be along with the policy and then we will also have an incident report, maybe easy. But actually, we would take the report in any form, so you know, it it it's fine that there's a form.
But just if we, this way of staff.
Just has questions that they can fill out, but any way, shape or form and then we'll take it follow-up.
Yeah.
So people shouldn't be concerned that, oh, I didn't have the form, so I couldn't fill out the paperwork.
Mm-hmm.
We don't care what form it comes in.
Right, there would be an investigation if there are any follow-ups anyhow.
Right, but just for me, for staff, or if someone came in, at least it's something that, almost like a checklist type of thing, right?
Yeah. Something you can.
Yes.
I agree, you you should have that.
Get the information if needed, so. I'm good with that. And then, you know, reading through here, I see this is obviously no form of child abuse. We've retaliated. Do we need to get into specifics of like including social media in this at all or are we, is this more just kinda?
What do you mean by social media, like like bullying and things like that?
Um.
Well, right, so whether or not it's through from texting, any kind of communications between coaches or parents and so I don't know if we wanted to go down that road, like or if just the fact that it says no form is permitted or allowed, if that just kinda is overwhelming or rather.
Uh it 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 would be my preference that it, yeah.
It's inclusive, isn't it?
I think.
Yeah.
I think it's included in like emotional abuse, right?
I agree, yeah.
I agree.
Right, I just didn't know how like specific it had to get, so that's, you know, that's why I was asking.
Specific.
Yeah.
So. Okay.
Yeah, there's so much in social media that we could be specific about that. I I'm afraid if we get into some specifics that we might.
Just listing social, just listing social media in general, but I I'm fine with it. I just wanted to ask that question.
Like there's no mention of social media on it.
There's no mention at all.
Yeah.
Well, um.
We could add a clause of included but not limited to.
We can add, we can add.
Yeah.
I mean, we're here for feedback, so it's just, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, she's not, any question?
Emotional abuse, um believe it or believe it.
Whether in person or.
In person or.
Or on social media, yeah.
Yeah.
Or on.
Or elsewhere.
Or online.
I think, yeah, I will.
Online is better.
You might as well add the phones too and therefore being that specific.
Right, or elsewhere.
Was that online?
Well, not necessarily if you're calling somebody or.
No, it's not online.
Through text.
Texting, so.
Yeah.
That's right, like you could really get really deep into the weeds here and I and I didn't mean for that to happen. I just.
Yeah. Yeah.
Inclusive of any of all forms of communication.
No.
I just wanted to make sure that.
Yeah, I agree, and all of.
Yeah.
Included but not limited to.
Communication of all forms.
Yeah, communication of all forms.
There you go.
Then it's.
Yeah.
Rob. Not getting too granular.
Yeah.
Okay, you got that.
Alright, I got it.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Yeah, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
That's good.
No, it's 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 good addition. And the other thing is, is that just because we're approving this tonight doesn't mean it can't be changed.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So if we find along the way that something is a little awkwardly worded or maybe not as expansive as we'd like, we can we can revise it. At least it's in good shape and.
And we could, we could uh we could table it and pass it next week. Um, that's. If, you know, if there are some substantive changes. Do you have any other?
Yeah.
Those are, those are what I know what I have.
Any other questions? Okay.
So I'm just gonna take in, um you know, put in an exhibit A as an incident report, just as a guide.
We can.
Um and I'm just gonna add the in communications of all forms.
Okay, and we pass it after revise?
We, yes, as amended tonight.
Okay. As amended.
And who's gonna be managing this signature collection process?
Oh, we do that.
It's pretty large. It'll be your office.
Yeah. Yeah, so um we do that along with the the clerk's office. We do it with our ethics that go out every year and when we have new employees. So we do this as a matter, of course. What we'll do is we'll circulate it um via email. We will have a collection box in my office for it to come back and we'll literally just go through. We'll may have all the departments responsible for their employees. Ike will add it to his packet.
Our employee packet is already very.
Quite hefty.
Yeah.
And the most of volunteers as well.
So. Yeah, it will.
If you can't lift it, then you can't work here.
So.
Maybe we should look into e-signings soon.
It'll be, yeah, so we'll just add it to our employment packet.
Mm-hmm.
I'm old school. I like the signatures on it.
Okay.
So that that was all I had, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, that's great.
Great, okay, so let's move on to the Civic Rec software system.
Um. Do you, do we wanna take in, um Ally had raised uh just an issue of timing and the fact that maybe we wanted to to jump ahead. I'm happy to do the the Civic Rec and costs and stuff, but do we wanna go to um to jump to summer camp or?
Let's go to. Um, I, that's fine. We can jump, we can jump to.
Do you think we'll get to everything? Okay, I'm hoping we get to everything, me too.
It's fine, let's go, let's get to summer camps because I think people
Well, let's go.
yeah, really care about that, although the the software system is about registration making. People have had a lot of issues registering and having a hard time getting onto the system and this will solve it.
It's good. Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Right, so what.
But but I think people are, would be interested in this as well.
Yeah, so very, very briefly, um we uh we have converted over to Civic Rec for our e-alert systems and it's already operating um on a number of the the town's platforms. Um and Ike was able to sit in, um and Rob Deary as well, um to Civic Rec. Um it has a far more robust capacity. They they sort of chuckled when we gave them our numbers as to like, you know, who would be registering. They were like, you will not have a problem. We're able to do fifty thousand at a time sort of thing. So we are moving out of the nineteenth century and hopefully moving into at least the the twentieth or perhaps twenty-first. Um so we um significantly robust, more robust registration capacity. Um and because it has expanded capacities, there's a number of peripheral systems that Ike uses downstairs. Um the one for the leagues and the stats.
We have a couple of different pro uh uh software programs.
Something lobster.
Yeah, we have League Lobster, we have Team Sideline, we have a few of those.
That's fine.
Yeah. It's Christine is on in case she wants to to weigh in. Hello, Christine. Oh, great.
Yeah.
Hi, Christine.
So, uh yes, we do have a couple other platforms that we use for scheduling uh leagues and things like that. So hopefully, it looks like Civic Rec might be able to help us.
So we're we're hoping to be able to phase out of those one-offs that we use and bring them all under a single umbrella.
It's a timeline.
Um, yeah, so um you know, we're we're also hoping to be able to, um well, why don't you tell me a little bit about um the Civic Rec and the ability to upload forms, medical forms and stuff like that and?
Right, so yeah, Civic Rec has a few trumpets and whistles that we don't currently have uh with our system, um which might actually make camp registration a little more efficient uh for the user and that they can uh they'll be able to pre-upload any sort of medical documents or anything like that so that when they go to register, it should just be a few clicks. Instead of right now, it's a lot, you know, it takes someone a bit of time to get through the whole registration process from camp. So this will make it a little bit more efficient, is is what we're hoping for, just in a nutshell.
Right, so if if parents have that information ahead of time, they can take it, upload it and then their child's profile is complete and they can take and register as opposed to being bogged down by the thousand and one questions that Community Pass was asking.
Mm-hmm.
There's an app too, right?
Right. What's that?
There's an app?
Oh, yeah, uh baby steps, baby steps.
He's like, relax.
Sucking ahead of ourselves.
Sorry, sorry. Sorry, sorry.
She just got so excited.
I did, I did.
One thing at a time, uh but the the uh the timeline, our first training is actually this Thursday, uh the first of many.
There's an app, but.
Uh and then in a perfect world, we'll have it for fall, um you know, so we'll see how that goes.
That'll be helpful.
Right, and we're hoping by the time.
I do, I do recall the system crashed.
Well, it's actually gone the last couple of years for camp, so.
Yeah, yeah.
What I would like to, our goal is obviously to have a couple of registrations before we get to camp. So this will allow staff to kind of work out the bugs so that we can get used to the software, um you know, live and with people registering and all that.
Right, and we were saying in our last meeting when we were talking about this, that like in the summer, the traffic is less and the signups will be less for like the summer programs, but it'll be a good way to sort of like test it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Right.
It's good timing. And iron out the glitches. Yeah, it's good timing then to have it ready for mid-August for fall.
Yeah, we're ready for fall.
Very good.
Yeah, ideal.
So, yeah, the ti- the timing actually worked on this really well for us.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, and and our hope is that by the time that, you know, the the real test comes for next year's summer camp, that.
Smooth sailing.
Yeah.
Smooth sailing, that we've done our homework, so that'll be, that'll be helpful.
And we're, we're happy to help with the communication.
Oh, that'll be wonderful, okay.
Plan with all of it.
Great.
People are aware. I think they'll be excited about it.
I I think so too. I I have to tell you, anything that makes people's lives easier and doesn't crash.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, technology is a wonderful thing when it works and we just have to make sure it works. And needless to say, because it comes with all these whistles and bells and it is the twenty-first century
Yep.
as opposed to the eighteenth that we were using, um the cost is considerable as well. So where Community Pass was six thousand.
Uh no, it was less than four.
Less than four thousand dollars a year and yes, under the theory that you get what you pay for.
Right.
Um we're thirty-two.
Yeah, sounds like it's more than thirty, yeah.
Um so one of the things that we wanted to talk to the commission about was um how to help defray costs of the new system. We we don't have to absorb all of the costs, but we are looking to defray some of them, um the same way we would for parking or anything else. Um so the question is whether or not there might be a small fee per account on an annual basis or a per transaction fee. And it's nothing we have to think of, we have to decide tonight, but it's something that, you know, if you feel strongly about it one way or the other. The numbers that Ike has given me are um the forty-five hundred separate transactions annually. Um think about maybe two dollars apiece or something like that on that fifty. Rob, did you have any thoughts on on what the numbers would be?
I I kind of thought of per transaction fee, um like.
But of how much?
Two dollars maybe?
Two dollars, yeah, just.
Two dollars.
No, 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 no.
I mean, just it depends really how much the board wants to absorb of of the costs.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um but we did, you know, you mentioned there were a couple other programs, League Lobster, I think,
Can I ask?
and was there something else that we're currently paying for that we wouldn't have to pay for also?
Have to pay. They're they're modest fees as well, but.
Yeah, they don't, they're not much. They're they're like between the two of them, it might be like eighteen hundred dollars, so.
Yeah.
It might be easier to do per transaction because the alternative is the to do per family or per individual and then you'd you'd have to track.
Yeah, I was gonna. Yeah, so what I was gonna ask, like logistically, would you just be charged for having an active account even if you don't register for programs? I mean, I think.
Or an annual, yeah, an annual activation.
An annual, I'm trying to do know what other towns do, do you know?
I think transactions.
New transactions better.
Transaction makes more sense. It's based on use.
Yeah, let's let's do that.
I'd be curious, what?
Yeah.
And also the the transactions would um would take into account how much people use the program.
That's a good question.
What are they doing it working out once a year?
Some people might use it for one, one transaction. Some people might use it for ten, so.
Exactly.
For me and my family is paying for every year because I have an account.
Okay. Does that make sense to you, Ike?
Do we charge more per account if people are just hanging out with an account?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I mean, I don't have a preference either way. Um, you know, it would make more, you know, probably makes more sense or it might be easier to do a per transaction.
Right, I think that would be more, more equitable.
Just cause once we set up the system, it just.
It's done, right?
Yes.
Yeah, it's done and we don't have to chase people ever again.
I think it's more transparent.
I'm sure there's a question.
Yeah, I did. I I asked if and if the there are additional fees for the town if individuals register, have an account but don't use it, or is it just a a set number? So that makes a difference. It would deter people from just having an account and hanging out if.
Yeah, if 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 we charged it that way, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, um we're leaning toward the per transaction, but I I didn't know how you felt about it one way or the other.
Yeah, I think so.
It, you know, it it's more real, it it's more representative of what it is.
Makes more sense.
It's like a fee is.
Yeah.
You use it more, you pay more.
It's like a demand with the town.
And, yeah.
Whoever's using it, she can.
Yeah.
So it sounds like it's easier and more fair, so.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Okay.
So now we can get to to summer camps.
Summer camps, yeah, um so, uh I'm really just gonna throw this out to the board
Okay.
and that has to do with just the reiteration of of our residency policy, um.
So just to make it clear, people think that we've changed the policy with the spring, I guess the spring programs, but we have not changed anything at all. I think people think that they can't get on because they're in the town of Mount Pleasant and that we've instituted a two-week delay, but as I understand it, nothing has changed. Maybe they can't get on because it's, the programs are closed already, not because we.
No, didn't we close all in the system with CCSD?
We put a delay.
No, it's it's, we have left it open. So as of even with our spring registration, um because there was a little bit of back and forth, we actually, we instituted CCSD participants as residents, so they are considered residents in our system.
Right.
We've always had a two-week delay for non-residents, um we've, that's.
Right.
Right, that language is always obvious. It's the same language.
Yeah, it's always.
The the language is there, but it doesn't, it's not in effect.
No, it is.
Is that right?
It is, it it.
I thought, I thought it was.
So here's the issue, this there's two different, two different things.
Okay.
We've, we've always had a two-week delay for non-resident registration, okay?
Non-resident of Newcastle and non-resident of CCSD.
Correct.
Yes.
So CCSD participants have always been able to register the same time that Newcastle residents have been able to register.
Right.
Alright, they were always considered residents in our system. They have been, that hasn't changed. So and and I, so here's where the confusion comes in, is we sent out our advertisement because we have registration opening in two weeks. CCSD participants are residents. They do not fall under the non-resident um category yet.
Okay, so they just saw the announcement for non-residents and thought it applied to them, but it does not, okay.
Currently.
And assumed. Correct, that is correct.
Okay.
I don't know if that makes sense.
And if.
That does make sense, yes. Yes.
And if they could not get in, it's because it was closed, not because they.
We're not open yet.
Not open yet.
I don't think it was open.
So I'm not sure what, well, not having spoken to people, we've just gotten letters, it's hard to know exactly what.
That's the problem. Right. Right, registration has not opened yet.
Yeah, so when you go, it's like kind of blank right now.
For for the summer. Right, you can, yeah, well, you can't even, so the advertisement went out just to say that registration is is coming.
Not in, no offense, but like you can't sign up for anything. Get ready, mark your calendars.
And the week before, you'll be able to view the programs and then the day of, you'll be able to register.
Okay.
So right now, people are reacting to misinformation.
That's just, that is on social media.
It is, it's on social media and we've gotten letters that people are unable to to register.
Nobody is.
So that's true for residents as well.
Okay.
No, there's no registration.
Yes, registration is not open, yeah, correct. There's no.
There's registration.
It is the fourteen.
Registration's the fourteen.
Yeah, for residents.
Okay, so right now, just so people know, all town of Newcastle residents and CCSD residents in Mount Pleasant can um register in the same way.
Correct.
Uh and they have the same status.
Correct.
Right now, okay.
Yes.
Um, so now.
But what are we gonna do about that going forward?
Going forward is what we have to think about. Um I know that when we look at the numbers in the in the chart that Jill provided, I think you look at the um.
More like.
I mean, so if you look at the second page, and I'm not sure if that's the right place to start, but just um to get an idea. Um.
So these are just, I think what you're looking at is just summer camp numbers.
This is, this is summer camp.
Yes.
Yeah.
But what we have is.
And this year?
Yes.
Yeah, so let me try to read, I'm gonna read that.
It's effective, the date is four twenty-sixth of twenty-four on town.
Ah, thank you.
So this shows the number of people enrolled um in town and in CCSD not within the town. And what I see here is that we have two hundred and eighty-two campers enrolled, twenty-seven.
Of which are CCSD.
Are CCSD. But we have a waitlist of town people. Is this correct? What, the the third column is showing, what what is the four hundred number?
That's, now, that's the total based on what's in our waitlist for, but some of those are repeats. So when you look down at the on-the-go camp and you see, you know, all those high numbers as waitlisted, there could be the same person on that waitlist every week.
For each week.
So I I didn't take, we didn't take out the redundance in that number. That was just.
Oh, okay, that's a really high number, yeah.
It's not really four.
And the CCSD waitlists are like, for example, um for week two, it says there's forty-nine on the waitlist and one is CCSD.
Yep.
Is that a total of fifty or is that forty-nine include the one?
The forty-nine includes the one.
Okay.
Okay, but I guess what this is showing is that there are town of Newcastle residents on the waitlist.
Yes.
When you say CCSD enrolled, is that not non-Newcastle tax?
No, Mount Pleasant, right?
Mount, Mount Pleasant.
Is that right? These are your, these are your numbers. I'm just, I'm just thinking.
Which now, right? Yeah.
School, school, they only pay school tax.
Right, right.
They go pay tighter.
Okay. So I guess what this is showing is that there are Mount Pleasant, town of Mount Pleasant residents who are enrolled while town of Newcastle residents are on the waitlist. And and that that's the issue that we're dealing with.
As insensitive as it sound, to me, that's unacceptable, period. Uh there's no, there's not to um sell anyone short or treat anyone different in the sense that they're all equal, but they're not in the sense that there's a taxpayer and a non-taxpayer. And our job is to represent our taxpayer, not to hurt or do anything wrong to someone who's not, but our taxpayer should go first.
I agree and I want to expand on that a little bit when we talk about taxpayer, right? Cause there's CCSD taxpayers, but what I want people to understand is
A taxpayer in a town camp.
Right, Newcastle.
not paying for, the the CCSD taxpayer is not paying for our parks and rec staff salaries, facility and maintenance, all of those additional costs that are associated with regular course of running a parks and rec department, a town camp, right? Yeah, you're paying your.
But it's beyond that too. It's you're paying for the road, the paving the road that we're paying for.
It's beyond that. Right.
I mean, not that they're not paying for Mount Pleasant or wherever they may be, but it's it's a different cost.
It's a different cost.
But also our camps and our programs take place mostly in town facilities.
Yes.
Yeah.
Very few take place in CCSD buildings. Um the TOTS camp is the one.
Is the only one.
Is the only one?
Yes.
Certainly is the one, but that's the only one.
And that's recent. That wasn't always the case, right?
For camp. Well, it it was.
And we pay for that.
It's important enough.
It was. It it's been there more than it hasn't.
Right. That's the other point, yeah.
We we took a break during COVID because we couldn't get into the school buildings, so we went to First Congressional
Right.
and we were there for a couple of years.
Right.
Um and then just recently, in the last two years, we've been able to go back to CCSD with our TOTS camp.
Right, so we pay an arms-length fee for that. We don't pay a nominal fee. Is that right? We pay.
It's six twelve a day.
Six twelve a day, which any third party I have to assume would pay.
I believe so, yeah, yeah, we don't, yeah, it's not a discounted rate.
Okay.
Yes.
Six twelve a day and six hundred and change a day times five days a week.
For six weeks.
Twenty-nine days, yeah, twenty-nine days.
Yeah, that's like, that's the ticket price for anybody who wants to use the school.
So I also agree that we can't leave our town residents in the cold and let residents from another town be enrolled. Uh however, I do understand the idea of community and how they feel about it and that their friends are part of the camp.
That's fair.
And we do want, we do wanna, you know, promote and support that sense of community. So how do we answer to both both needs? And I, you know, the only answer I could see is to try to expand accessibility to the camp. We can't have our residents take a backseat, but we can try to ex, you know, expand um enrollment so that everybody can get in. So that's, I guess, the next issue that we we should discuss.
Could I ask just a?
Whether we can, you know, there are three different camps, so.
Before we start talking about expanding capacity, can I just, uh I just wanna understand a little bit about like um parity cause we're saying that the Mount Pleasant residents who are in CCSD are aren't paying taxes that are supporting the parks and rec department, but they're also having access to opportunities in Mount Pleasant that the Newcastle residents are not.
Yes.
So it's not that um, it's not that there aren't options.
Yes.
And are Newcastle residents able to participate as non-residents? Do we know this in Mount Pleasant?
I don't.
I don't.
Okay. So that was, I wanted to talk about that too, right? Is um what do other towns do? How do they deal with non-residents that want to enroll in their programs?
New difference, etc., etc.
Yes.
So do other towns, and I think we're the outlier in allowing CCSD. If I'm, if I'm understanding everything that's been having, going on, we're the outlier in allowing non-town taxpayers, but CCSD taxpayers to take advantage of our programs the same way that a town of Newcastle taxpayer is, right? We treat them the same now, but other towns don't. I think Austin is an example, Mount Pleasant is an example where.
Markiscos is.
Markiscos, there is a delayed registration period for non-town paying residents or there's an additional fee, right?
Right, and it it varies from municipality to municipality. Some just do the fee, but they allow them to register at the same time. But when you talk to those superintendents, it's because they don't have a capacity issue. Like they're not getting the enrollment in their programs to where it's, where it's, where it's an issue, right?
It's a great problem to have, but.
They're not filling their programs to where they have to worry about that sort of thing. Some of the municipalities do both, right? Where it's a a a fee and a delayed registration point. uh a fee and a delayed registration point, um.
In fact, ironically, the Town of Mount Pleasant has beautiful camp facilities, they have a pool, at least one pool, they have a huge camp. But I understand the issue is that the kids want to be with their friends, so we 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 know that, um so
It's a social issue, right, of course.
Well, when we talk about extending.
So just so you, sorry, I didn't mean to catch up, just from when it comes to our program registration, not camp.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
When it comes to our program registration, the current setup is it's a two week delay for non-residents and a twenty percent.
Additional fee.
Right.
Right, for any non-resident, so that's the way it is currently set up for non-residents in our system. So it's a twenty percent fee and it's a two week delay for registration.
And do we
Do you think two weeks is is reasonable?
I was gonna say more.
Two weeks seems like a long time.
I would do um do it by days rather than
Four days, five hours.
It's a two days.
Eight hours.
I would say two, I was thinking that, two days, I would say two days instead of two weeks.
Yeah.
Help.
Is there like a curve for registration that you could kind of like, I mean, like
Well, town camp's full in like an hour.
Three days.
Yeah, but is it a problem with regular programming as well?
Oh, I see. Last.
What's that?
During the year, is is the demand like this?
No. Uh it well, it it depends on the, it depends on the program, like we do have some
We have waitlisted.
E-programmers.
There's some programs, yeah, um you know.
Oh, ukulele, Izzy girls.
Yeah, there there are, so yes, there are some programs that fill up pretty quick, yeah.
You see ukulele.
Sorry, it's my joke. We do offer ukulele.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's not really full.
And it it gets waitlisted.
It does.
I'm not joking.
Some of them are.
Wow. Good problem to have, yeah.
I swear.
Right, chess program, like a lot of
Try to get chess to do it every year.
I see that, ukulele.
Yeah, we still have
A shop program, I did really love.
Fiddleheads, fiddleheads is always waitlisted.
I couldn't find it myself, yeah.
Yeah, wood program.
The wood programming, yeah.
Yeah.
But you know about um increasing accessibility, I think it's important, not only, you know, it will make people happy and feel a sense of community, but it's also a revenue stream for us. And you know, we need the facilities, of course, we need to increase staff, but
Take one.
Jill's taking a deep breath.
I guess.
Yeah, I think, because Vicki and I have had this conversation, she's absolutely right, I I
She's so good.
you know, um aspirationally, everybody wants that, nobody wants to be able to trend anybody away.
Right. I mean, no, we're going to talk about the, you know, the limits and the 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 roadblocks here, but I just want to establish a concept that this is a revenue stream for the town. And so we should want people to enroll, but we have a an issue with facilities. Um and that, you know, that will lead us into the discussion about Tots camp, adventure, camp adventure, and on the go.
So if I can, if I can just kind of circle circle back um to the residency policy. What can we start with that and just what do we, what are we doing going forward? As as far as what our policy is going to be um with registration.
I agree with what Jeremy said, that I don't think it's fair for a Newcastle resident who's paying taxes to
The town.
To the town of Newcastle to lose a spot to a non-resident if it's i- if we have no choice, I'd like to make that I I mean, preference I think would be that there's nobody that we have to put on a waitlist, but if it's either or, I I think we have to prioritize the the Newcastle taxpayers. Um it's, I mean, it is, it's it's it is a kind of a small number as a percentage as well.
What I'm hearing around the table is you think two days would be a fair delay rather than two weeks.
But it's something that doesn't make a difference if it's if it's if it's knocked out in an hour.
Yeah.
Gonna be
Yeah, but if we're gonna have a a standard, we must make it two days instead of two weeks, I think that sounds more reasonable.
Yeah.
So
Would it feels arbitrary to say two days, two weeks, what do other towns do?
Um
If they have a delay.
I I don't know if it's arbitrary, I mean, it it's going to be arbitrary no matter what, uh even though other towns do two weeks.
It varies, it varies from town to town.
Right.
But other towns don't show out.
Hours does, so.
We don't have to do what other towns do.
So, I mean, yeah, so if I I I mean
I'm fine with two days.
Two hours, two days, two weeks.
Two days.
Only two days.
None of it's gonna make a difference.
Well, I I could fine with two days, you know.
No, first, other other programs other than summer camp, like, to summer camp.
That's true.
Okay, so yeah, so so I'm sorry, that that was gonna be my question, are are we talking about our policy for summer camp or are we talking about our policy for
Okay.
during the year registration, it's the same.
I think it should be, it has to be consistent, it should be consistent.
It's two plus one.
Okay, yeah, whatever, I think whatever changes or revisions we make here should be consistent across the board.
Alright, I actually Okay.
And can I just ask one thing? This issue was born out of a non-resident permit parking issue, right?
Yeah.
Would you mind clarifying for everybody what our policy is there or is that gonna change too?
Oh, no, no, because it's always been that, so
Okay.
um we actually had a a um CCSD parent come into the clerk's office, Christina's here, she can attest to it. And she was uh giving Christina a hard time about the the parking permit, she's a resident, Christina said, oh, you're not a resident, you're paying a non-resident fee, and she said, well, I don't pay a non-resident fee for recreation, why do I pay a non-resident fee for parking? And we have always charged a non-resident fee for parking, this is, I'm I'm here for twenty something years.
If she did that resident, that non-resident just would have not said it.
We would not have known that there was an issue.
But the point is that that's our policy for non-resident parking, and I think that this conversation was born out of realizing that there needed to be a little bit more clarity on
Right.
But then we're in sync and synchronized, like it should be
how we deal with Right, I think there should be consistency and the rules should be the rule and it's easier for everybody to follow and and we just make it as clear
Right.
Consistency, that's what I'm
as possible for everybody.
Right, and then if I could just clarify, yeah, if I could just clarify, because the the parking is a little bit different.
Yeah, we we have to be consistent, correct.
Correct. Mm-hmm.
And the parking's a little bit different because we do charge a difference in price, so it's it's the it's twice plus a bit.
More than twice, yeah.
Um but we have the capacity to accommodate everybody.
Right.
And the issue here is, is at least at this point in time, we don't, um and I wish we did and we're getting there, but there's just a major differential, okay, so
So we we're agreed on the two days, and what about what about the
Yeah, sure.
Okay, but we're we're clarifying that Newcastle residents mean you pay taxes to the Town of Newcastle.
No.
Right, yes.
Going forward.
Going forward.
After summer twenty twenty.
Thank you.
I think it's also important to, oh, go ahead.
Well, I was just, I just had
Yeah, this is fall.
I had two detailed questions, I was gonna do that one question, can we s- can we
Yeah.
For the Au- August is when the registration opens for fall, so.
For the fall. Fall programming, so we'll institute it for fall programming, um and then are we keeping the twenty percent fee?
Right.
Okay, right.
Well, we, I I don't see the need to change that.
Okay, I just wanna, just wanna make sure.
Um I don't think that was on the table, but it, you know, it's a fair question, I don't think that was on the table.
Yeah.
I just I just, I don't wanna screw anything, so.
Yeah.
No, no.
Is that in place for summer twenty twenty four registrants, or are they, so it
Yeah, I know, yeah, sure.
No. We're we're gonna keep it the same for the summer programming and any changes we've made for fall.
Okay, so there won't, there isn't currently a twenty percent increase for the campers who enrolled, who or who are enrolling.
No, it won't be retroactive.
Mm, cuz you said enrollment opens up soon.
For summer programming, separates from summer camp.
Okay.
We run programs outside of camp during the summer, so it's separate, and that will stay
Mm-hmm.
under the current policy, where CCSD participants are considered residents, so they would fall in the resident pool and register on the first day.
Regarding timing and no additional fee.
Correct. Correct, yeah.
This is only going to go into effect for fall twenty twenty four and going forward, which doesn't, and registration doesn't open until August.
Thank you.
Okay.
I think it's also important to know, and I heard this comment a lot when this came about a few months ago, it's like is that families feel because they are paying CCSD taxes, that like our kids just automatically have access to our fields and our buildings year round. And I think it's important for everybody to also understand that we pay, like Ike said, a fee every day to get inside that building, to play a game on the field, every time we
It's not included.
we use a CCSD field, that we're charged that, so it's not like that comes with like, as a, you know, a as a CCSD taxpayer, you get access to like use the building, whatever, we have to pay for it.
Jo, what was the most we were paying at one point, a couple of years, we were paying eighty something thousand a year.
Yeah, we were paying eighty thousand dollars for facilities.
So the Town of Newcastle is paying eighty something thousand dollars to CCSD to use the stuff.
Yeah, that's that's pretty substantial.
Just subsidized by the taxpayer.
Yeah, and a lot.
Yes.
Right, right.
And as do all the groups, like all, you know, all the sports groups, like we pay, anytime your kid steps foot on a field, CCSD field, we're, we pay per child
Yes.
for lacrosse, baseball, all of that, that doesn't come with your taxes.
Right, and you may want to also mention the fact that if your child is a Town of Newcastle resident, but not a CCSD taxpayer,
It's
we pay additional for that child.
Can you say that again?
So if you are a Town of Newcastle resident,
Okay.
but you're not a CCSD taxpayer,
Right.
we pay an additional fee to the CCSD for that child.
So if you're in Austin schools and you wanted to go.
Right. I was gonna say it's Austin, right?
Because we collect, Town of Newcastle encompasses six different school districts.
If you're Austin
Yep, right, so the CCSD looks at our enrollment.
Well, that's interesting. Because we don't charge those children.
We have to submit rosters for every girl, right?
Yes.
And if any child belongs to the Austin, Yorktown
We could submit per child.
You're paying more for them.
Correct.
Brier, oh, I'm sorry, uh that uh Byram Hills, sorry.
Byram, uh Mount Pleasant, I mean, um
Cuz that's applying like a different
Yes, any
Byram, yeah.
Yorktown, Bedford, Austin, or Byram Hills School District.
Right.
Cuz we're saying to the Mount Pleasant families Yeah.
Right.
We pay more for that child.
That because they don't have to pay Town of Newcastle taxes, they will have this twenty percent additional.
Correct.
Right.
But if we're paying more for
But they're paying town taxes.
Yeah, the Town of Newcastle residents are paying town taxes.
They're paying.
Right, but but you're also saying that Town of Newcastle residents who are not CCSD
Well, aren't
are costing the town more. We we charge them, right, we pass that on, no, 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 I'm sorry, we don't.
CCSD charges more.
We don't, we do not, we we eat, we eat that difference.
We Is that, that's a little more We absorb that. Yes. That's a little Right.
How, what is
So we're absorbing that.
Well, but the CCSD taxpayers
Right.
Yeah, well, it's fifty instead of fifteen.
are something.
Residents, same way that
At least it was the last time I looked, I don't know if it's changed recently in the last.
The Newcastle residents are subsidizing the non-Newcastle CCSD. You know, I I thinking of, thinking of that, it doesn't make sense.
But but if we're gonna charge the Mount Pleasant kids more going forward, but not charge the Austin kids more.
Because we should be charged for each of our residents. We should be charged per child, it doesn't matter, shouldn't matter where that child lives.
But the CCSD is, I can only assume that they're considering
Uh so we we can, um I think we should address this separately.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree.
But but I think the point is that
Yeah. But Jill just said that they do cost more because they don't pay CCSD taxes.
Our our kids are being treated differently based on where they live by the school district.
Right.
Right.
Um, okay.
Um
So I think, I think that covers the policy.
So we're clear with this?
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, that's a fall, I think.
Is 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 your board, is commissioned to, I'm saying, agents?
And then, um, so
Yeah, what was the consensus or is is there a prevailing view?
So the consensus, the consensus from the rec board um was, we did feel that non-residents
Consensus.
should pay more, I think we did not come to a consensus on the prioritization, um because we didn't have all of the facts. Um I think just very open, so there was no consensus coming out of the last meeting on the prioritization.
Hmm, I feel like we talked about all of this.
Um We did, but I don't, there wasn't like a formal
No.
vote, there wasn't like formal votes.
There wasn't a formal vote.
Well, we weren't asked, I mean, that it wasn't that we were put, asked and put to a vote, it was a discussion
Yes. Yeah.
that that resulted in this, in the conversation.
But that's okay, I mean, maybe you were waiting to meet with us, but it sounds like we've come to a collective consensus here.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think anyone around the table disagrees.
No, I mean, I think at the end of the day, it's a capacity issue and it's it's a, it's a, it's a staffing issue and it's it's complex, and I think some of the things that have been said on social media and just in town is like, hey, you can just add more counselors and like, it's just not that simple, because um there are staffing requirements, um and testing requirements and and different things like that, if you are a employee versus just a camp counselor, it's not it's not a PTA event, um if I'm being super open, so um I think for us, we would love to we wanna be fair to the taxpayers for sure, and we also, in looking at other municipalities, non-residents or non-taxpayers um do pay more, um but at the end of the day, it's a capacity issue, right, and a staffing issue, and so that's what
Right.
that's what we would love to work towards to address so that no kid is left behind.
That's true, yeah, and I I think that, I think that's up the prux of it really, and what I was saying in terms of people feeling that they can be part of
Yeah. Yeah.
the same programs and, you know, the same, not, if not the same town, the same community, and it's a revenue stream for us as well.
Yeah.
So can we, like, really quickly go over the capacity, you know, the different programs and the capacity issues, do you think?
Oh.
Well, yeah.
Sure, and I'd one more, one more thing too, sorry, um one more thing.
Well
You know, do you want to just Yeah, sure.
We also talked about um the fact that we would, we would love to see a partnership um with the school administration um to help us address the capacity issue, because it seems that it is negatively impacting some CCSD um taxpayers, so if that is an avenue that could be explored or talked about as a solution, given how much we pay for the facilities and again, going back to the capacity and staffing, we want
Yeah, there may be restrictions with what they can do because of um, you know, the particulars of the programs, for instance, the Tots need the elementary school classrooms, um
Which which, of course, we're not getting this, you know.
Mm-hmm.
Well, well
I'm just, I'm just, I'm flagging all of the issues discussed.
Um, I I I think you're right, I think you're right.
Yeah, you're, yeah, no, 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 it's it it's a, it's a, it's a fair point, right, right.
Yeah. But the Tots is what's in the schools.
Camp Adventure is at Amsterdam.
Yeah.
Yeah, on the go is on, on the go, on the budget.
Oh, okay.
And Amsterdam has its own set of issues that we've been really trying to make improvements, at least in the last year that I've joined Town Board. We've done a lot at Amsterdam Park, um but at the end of the day, it's limiting, right, the Amsterdam Park is limiting. There are, it's a tent in the, in, there's no, there's no bathrooms, there's no indoor facility.
I'm not that familiar with
So let's go through, let's go through each of them.
Do you wanna give a quick rundown, Ike, of the Tots camp and
You, yeah, because you did, you did the search, yeah.
And what the limitations are and
Yeah, so, I mean, it's really, it it's, to me, it's a very simple, brief kind of conversation, right? It's the chicken and the egg, so you could give me the biggest facility known demand for camp, right? And I could take a thousand kids in there and everybody would be happy, but if I don't have the staff to meet the numbers as required by the Department of Health, then I can't take those kids. So my point has always been, and the way we always do registration is, I'd rather tell families no in February, like cuz I base my numbers right now on the staff that we've been able to get consistently from year to year. Like, I know we have a good shot to hit certain staffing numbers every year, and it's been harder over the, over the last four years to reach those numbers, but we get to them. Um so, you know, we cap registration, so I'll start with Tots, Tots is limited limited classrooms, and we and we've always filled to those classrooms based on the rooms that we get with the school district, right? But we fill those classrooms based on what the school district gives us every year.
So Tots is limited by facilities.
Correct, right, so we get a certain number of rooms from the school district every year for Tots camp, and that's what we register for. And it's been the same really since we've gone back. And so, so that's Tots camp, and right now, we have kids on the waitlist, um it looks like we're gonna hit our staffing numbers right now uh to meet those needs for the kids, for the kids that are registered.
And like you said, those are numbers determined by the Department of Health, not by us.
What what is the child to staff ratio that you need?
So Tots is one to six.
Okay.
Yeah. Um and then we hire, you know, I have to have an EMT for every site, uh we have a director and assistant director, and then we have our specialists, we have our music, arts and sports. So Tots, we we fill to the capacity that's given us by the school district. Now, saying that, even if the school district gave us, you know, another couple of rooms, right now, based on what I have, I wouldn't have the staff to accommodate those, to fill those classrooms.
It's really hard to staff in summer.
So
Yes.
So that's where we're at right now.
It's a challenge. Find someone who's work.
That's important, cuz I did not realize that that was a limiting factor.
How old do they need to be?
Cuz all these different requirements.
Sixteen is, sixteen is the minimum age, so
CITs don't count.
Well, CITs count against our numbers, so if we bring CIT
It counts as campers, right.
Yeah, if we bring CITs in, which we do every year, they go against our numbers as campers, yeah.
That wouldn't count, right.
Yep.
That's right. That's Pay to enroll.
Okay.
Yeah, according to Department of Health, our CITs are fourteen and fifteen, that's what we bring in.
So it's sixteen.
Yeah, Department of Health, not yet.
The minimum age for camp counselor is sixteen. Then we go off from there. Our head counselors, we try to, our, you know, our goal is to have, you know, them be at least a college for for our head counselors as we should unless they're really good, so.
Mm-hmm. So facilities and ratio, staff, staffing ratios are the limiting factor, okay.
So what about
Sorry.
Okay, and staff ratios, yeah. And then with, and and it's the same thing with camp adventure, you know, um
So that's at Amsterdam Fields.
Correct, good.
Um which we will be improving, we will be getting a press grant to, you know, set up separate fields and develop an indoor facility there. So there'll be capacity to expand, although not up as there.
Not really, cuz we we would be at, like, if we finish the inside of Amsterdam, we're already at max capacity for what that building can can take for the different rooms.
Okay, so how would that, how would that affect enrollment for camp adventure?
It will, it helps us not have to rely, so right now, you know, we talk about a partnership with the school district, um they've been great this year, and they're allowing us to use Seven Bridges as our rain location, right, so
Which was not the case last summer, I should remember.
Correct, and which was always tough for working parents, because we'd have to call them in the morning if there's a thunderstorm rolling in and say, hey, we can't take your kids today, because we don't have a secure indoor facility. By improving Amsterdam, that will give us that secure indoor facility, so we won't have to rely on the school district as a rain site for that.
It doesn't add capacity.
It does not.
And for camp adventure right now, we do have a waitlist of, well, I'm not quite sure how your numbers got you, but it looks like for the six weeks, we have a waitlist of twenty five people of of town residents
Yes.
for for our CCSD Mount Pleasant.
No, I think you, I think you said that the twenty five includes the four.
Um Right?
Yes, yeah, of the four, of the twenty five for the CCSD.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Well, oh, okay.
So twenty five is total.
So the twenty five includes the four. So the twenty five includes the four, so there are four, four are, okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, but again, the point is that we have five town of Mount Pleasant enrolled in that program. Whereas we have Newcastle residents on the on the wait list, which is, which is the issue.
Twenty one on the wait list, right.
That that's the problem.
How many drop-offs do you get to people who uh ultimately don't attend even even after they enroll?
But very small, that it's, you know, we would
'Cause by math, there's a payment plan, so it would lose out.
We we might, we might actually, you know, you might get someone that'll enroll for all six weeks, but then miss a week from vacation, but typically
This number is hard.
They're still trying to keep them.
Once during.
We have once during the rink.
What, he said I'm gonna have nineteen that
Um, we don't, we very seldom do we get somebody that, yeah, 'cause they won't get a refund either and that's the other thing that kinda keeps them.
It's like there's a refund policy.
So Ike, you're saying that Camp Adventure, even with the improvement you'd be making, um would be the same capacity?
Yeah, I would say pretty close, I would wanna get the final numbers from, you know, depending expected.
Like wow. What what would we have to do to him, you know, to increase capacity?
Say increase, give me bigger bigger structure.
Bigger structure.
Is it the staff?
Yeah.
Uh, and and staff, so right now
And and staff is gonna be there.
But
Well, the structure isn't necessarily
Right now, we hire over thirty staff for Camp Adventure.
Yeah.
Thirty staff.
Between counselors and specialists and like between our AMTs, directors, all of that.
Okay.
Right now, I'm seven staff short just to meet the numbers that we have for camp, so.
Do you expect that you won't be able to staff that? 'Cause that sounds like a liar.
I guess it's a
Oh, it sounds a lot.
I mean, just give me the staff.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna jinx it, but yes, I will learn a position right now where I I can meet those numbers, but this is goes back to my previous point, right?
You will.
I'm I'm seven short of what we've taken right now for registration. To just assume that I can, just because I have another building, that I could take another forty kids, I've gotta now staff those extra groups.
What's the council, yeah, what's the council and kid ratio for Adventure?
What's the ratio?
Uh, so it it fluctuates 'cause we go first through, so it goes from one to six to one eight, um we can get away with sometimes one to ten
Right. Okay. Except for the older kids.
depending on the ropes, yeah, for the older kids, yeah.
Mm.
And is on the go one to ten, because that's the
On the go is one to, I wanna say it's one to twelve, one to thirteen.
Is that right, Christine?
It change, it changes
I think twelve, once to twelve.
I think twelve.
Yeah, I think twelve, yeah, and then it changes if we're at a swimming site where we have to have the numbers, the numbers always, the ratio shrinks when we go to the pool.
One to twelve, right.
Mm. Four, right, it's like But on on the go, structurally limited with initial buses.
Correct, and and the facilities, some of the facilities that we go to, um wouldn't be able to handle, wouldn't be able to handle
Right, so
So if you can tell
Go
Like for what, give me an example?
We do uh some of the indoor stuff, uh we go to the like the escape room things, we do those, uh
Yep. And you're, those places are giving you a number that they're mapped out, okay?
Correct, yep, um, you know, the indoor go-karting or ropes courses, they can only take so many kids, uh we go to bowling, we go to AMC. Uh, there's a few of those other indoor places that we can't, you know, they just can't handle if we rolled in with a hundred and twenty kids.
Mm. So you can't add, you can't really add because they need to be able to go on those trips.
We'd have to
Right, or you have to change the whole program.
We like
We always have to change the
But also, but also the buses are an issue, let's say you have a bus that fits forty kids, but then you have five more, you can't get a whole bus for five.
Need a larger bus.
Well, it becomes cost prohibitive, it becomes cost prohibitive, you're paying for the full bus for four kids, but the cost of the bus is significant.
That's 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 my understanding, um Another other limitation.
Right.
Mm-hmm. As you're staffing the amount of
And it's every day, on the go camps is every day.
Right.
Buses also don't come with CCSD taxes.
So everywhere, four short.
I mean, for on the go, size of the wait list is pretty much the same as the size of the
He learned it.
Right, so the bus, they're not the most
Yeah.
Say that again?
Yeah, we actually, we have a
If we're on the go, it's almost like you could reproduce the same camp.
Yeah.
I mean, you you have the same
Just double the program.
Right, I mean, you have this, so like, can you almost, I'm just asking, 'cause I'm I'm a newbie, so pardon my questions, but
Yeah.
But we're all we're all new.
We're asking, but these numbers
Um, but can you almost create like two, like camp A, camp B on the go, where they go different days to those places? You know what I mean?
We don't have the staffers, but we don't have the staff.
Go
It's a staffing, same.
Yeah, no matter what, you don't have staff.
Right.
So right now
Do we not, do we not have staff because of the salary or?
It's hard to hire.
Like why can't we get, why can't we get sixteen to twenty five year olds?
Yeah, that was also
Like, aren't they looking for jobs? Why can't we get them?
No, lifeguards are how I'm trouble staffing, it's
It's crazy.
No.
It's crazy.
Really?
Yeah, if I was on the, I was on the driving guy, the Kentsico Dam, so the lifeguard needed, there's a huge billboard right by Kentsico Dam right now, lifeguard's needed.
Yeah.
What are they doing? Don't they worry, Matty?
Say it.
They're They're paying huge bonuses and stuff to get to like their Kentsico Dam.
Yeah.
No, Kentsico Dam, right, they're paying for the training, so if they can't get lifeguards, we should recommend to hire a breed, I don't know that we fare on that one.
Well, we're all in agreement that we would love, truly love, Parks, everybody knows Parks and Rock is near and dear to my heart.
I don't know how.
Right.
I would love, that you love, we would all love to have everybody, of course we would.
Mm. Yeah. Right.
There's can and there's just the reality of the situation is based on staffing numbers and facility, it's it's impossible where we're
And you need both and and it's, and so I go back to my original concern is, I don't wanna open up registration in January, February to double the numbers
Right.
and then all of a sudden, I'm sitting here in May going, well, there's no way I'm gonna be able to get another ten counselors to cover our additional numbers.
We're at the same spot. Many people have camp, they don't have
And now I have to, now I have to call these people and comment, well, I, we took your money originally, but now we can't staff it.
Yeah.
Even though
We got the money, we got the money that he's gonna go away with.
Even the arts camp has a
Right.
Yeah, the child care is less.
Yeah.
Art camp, the art camp.
Art camp, that's a way to
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, the Town is completely filled, right, like
Yeah.
How, do you need the same ratios for an arts camp as you do for like the more physically
Well, our art art center is only so big, we we
Well, I'm wondering, uh like I know we've, so I've sort of talked about this, but chap
That door has to stay open, right?
I'm sorry, it's an open meeting, so the door has to stay open.
Well, if it
Can you open the
No, the doors have to stay open.
Can you please open, open the doors?
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you.
Like for for
Not our rules.
For next summer, we start to talk about the idea of chap pack in a theater camp.
Same issue you have, you have a same problem.
Yes, yeah.
Staffing.
Staffing, well, I don't know, 'cause it might be a different Elka kid and also the um, the person who we would bring more maybe to run the theater camp at chap pack
Yeah.
might have teenagers that they have relationships with.
I I, you know what, I love, I love that idea, I think we should, you know, try try to elaborate on, I try to investigate that.
Am I wrong, am I saying?
Because if there are thirteen art center kids.
I mean
Yeah, I'm gonna get
So let's let's look into that, but
Let's have that off, like, there are some things, limitations that come with that, depending on how you
We can't
Camp.
Yeah.
I think something else.
Go ahead, no.
Is is there
In art center doesn't run as a camp, just wanna point that out, it's not regulated by the health department.
Not regulated by the health department.
We use the word camp, but it's really more of a clinic or program, so it's based on facility, you know, capacity more than anything else.
It's a work camp, but it's really Clinic or program, so it's based on facility, you know, capacity more than anything else.
More than
Okay.
Would it find a clinic?
If if it's it's not, it's not regulated by the Department of Health, so
It's 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 not So
And get, but what defines it?
We might like art camp, but it's really like an art, just a separate art center.
Like art camp, but it's really like an art, just a separate art art center. Just a separate art art center.
But but what defines it, what makes it a clinic as opposed to a camp?
Maybe clinic is not the right word, it's more of a program.
Maybe clinic is not the right word. It's not
So I'm gonna put in uh a plaza, I wanna put in maybe a shameless plug for our Envision Newcastle project here because
We're on the same
Now's a good time.
we're asking people to come and tell us, give us their ideas of what we could do with town owned lands. Then wouldn't it be great to have a new town hall that could be expanded and have a great community center with more town facilities? So that we could have more programming and more accessibility. So that's, if people are wondering why we're doing this Envision Newcastle, um it's to get ideas like that, um and I know that people are posting all kinds of negative, negative things about this already online, but we wanna get your ideas about what the needs are for the community.
Yeah.
So an obvious need to me is a need for more facilities.
Recreation.
Recreation facilities, so we, and you know, our town hall is kinda falling apart, all due respect. It it would be great to have a, you know, a new building with a, with a real community center, with facilities and and a better rep field that could possibly be enclosed for more access over the winter, so I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there to let people know
Right.
uh to please be engaged in in our visioning sessions and to come and give us your ideas and your needs so that we could, you know, look to the future as we plan.
Yes.
So sorry, that's a shameless plug, but it's it's really important, you know.
Not a shame, it's a great plug.
Yeah, but on the staffing, but on the staffing front, we did talk about, you know, kind of how could we better prepare for next year, kind of given the demand but that might require a partnership with CCSD, we talked about potential, you know, brainstorming ideation sessions of reimagining.
And they do advertise for us, you know, doing their appointment board.
Yeah, that's good.
But anyway, I think I think we're gonna have to to
Has staffing been getting I just have one question about staffing, is is it getting harder, easier, or is it consistently the same challenge?
to wind down, yeah.
So we start, so staffing has gotten a little bit more difficult over the last few years, um but this year, we started earlier. Um, but again, you have to remember you're dealing with high school and college students who this isn't, no matter how many times you can email or reach out it's not until that they're ready to come home for summer break do they actually respond, um so, you know, this is, you see it, this is the time of year that we actually start getting those responses from
Right, so in two weeks, you'll be hearing
You know, we reach out to them before Christmas break, hoping that they'll respond then, but and then we hear from them now, so.
Right. Right.
Okay, well, thank you so much for coming and looking at all these documents and figures and I know that this is a lot of work for everybody and we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for coming and we're, you know, we're still here, we're here, we can talk and some contact us or we can
Thank you.
So is there, is there like a decision or, you know, regarding what? Did we, is
Yeah, we kind, we made it around the table, yeah.
No, probably. Okay, I didn't know if there would have to be a poll or anything.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I think we're concluded.
There is no discussion, there is no discussion, we don't have
Public comment is coming up.
This is a work session, there's no public comment, but there will be a public comment period at the town board meeting.
Volunteering.
I think you welcome volunteering your time.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you very, very much.
Likewise, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, good evening again, everyone, and welcome to the town board meeting of April thirtieth. We've just been in a work session and may I have a motion to close the work session and open the town board meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Aye.
None. Okay, so we're running a little bit late, so I wanna take things out of order. We have a large group today and we have something very exciting to announce, we have the Seven Bridges States Team Science Olympiad winners.
Yeah.
Are they outside, are they here?
They're outside.
Okay, everyone should, everyone should come in.
So exciting.
Okay, I walk, I need you.
I know.
Hello, hello, everybody, everybody come in. Okay, welcome. Okay, you can try to find the seat, but you'll be getting up soon.
Those are students, but
Yes, well
A lot of medals to blame.
Alright, the parents can come in too.
So awesome.
Everybody should come in. So welcome to our Science Olympiad winners, we have the Seven Bridges States team, one of two New York teams that are participating in the nationals. So congratulations to the winners of the twenty twenty four New York Science Olympiad State Tournament, the first time winners in Chappaqua Central School District history. So the tournament was held in Syracuse on April fifth and sixth and the team took home a record of twenty two medals, including six golds, two silvers, four bronze in twenty three different events. And the team competed against the best forty middle schools in New York following the regional tournaments in March that had a participation from over six hundred and fifty middle schools. In addition, the Seven Bridges team had the best overall performance of any school at the state tournament in the last twenty years, excluding pandemic years. And as New York State champions, Seven Bridges will be headed to the Science Olympiad National Tournament for the second year in a row and will compete against the best sixty middle schools in the nation at Michigan State University on May twenty fourth and twenty fifth. So very exciting happenings here and what I wanna do is I wanna call up each of the students separately and when I call your name, I want you to come and stand up and we will, the board will then come around and take a picture with you. But before you come up, I don't wanna lose track of this, I just wanna um give a shout out to all of the projects you did, I'm not gonna say who did what project, we'll be here for a long time. But each student participated in four, three to four events, so to give you an idea, there was anatomy and physiology, can't judge a powder code busters, crime busters, disease detectives, dynamic planet, ecology, experimental design, fast facts, flight, forestry, fossils meteorology, micro mission, reach for the stars, road scholar, roller coaster, wheeled vehicle, wind power, write it, do it. Well, I'm sure there's a lot more to be said for all of those, but it sounds really exciting. So now I would like to, and again, before we get to the students, I wanna recognize the coaches for the for the States team. The coaches are Sky Albert Hall, Gurav Bhuan, Rajesh Bordewaker, Jenny Guerras, Sumeda Goel Vaihava Goel, Jorge Gomez, Madhu Hugahali, Shilpar Kumar, Jen Lauer, Isaac Lauer, Tanya Marinari, Marinari Daniel Eng, Emma Peng, Haibu Q, Shailja Seth, Nitin Sharma, Howard Shi Latha Thiruvikraman, Jeannie Thomas, John Wildstrom, Yang Yang and Jin Zhang. And um special acknowledgement goes to Daniel Eng, parent coordinator, who was instrumental in the team's success. And I also wanna recognize the PTA STEM committee, um PTA STEM committee chairs were very active in in Chandana Nalan and Rvashi Hut. So thank you to um all the parents who who helped and made this possible. So now I'd like to call up the students and I am really sorry if I'm butchering some of the names, so you'll have to forgive me. So Viom Bhuan, come on up. Agaska Bordewaker, Olivia Chang, Victoria Chang Alex Ko, Yulang Fan, Zachary Gibbs, Eli Gilzman Abika Goel, Annie Gona, Roma Tujahali Noel Maita, Anush Niyana Pali
Kelty.
Eng Amy Q, Allison Reagan, Luke Harris and Lucas Zhang. And anyone, is there anyone that I missed? No, okay, so we're going to come out and take a picture.
Number nine.
Super loud.
Yes. It's already swan.
Congratulations.
This is so wonderful. I'm not gonna leave you there, I'll come between you. We can go between the students, you guys, okay.
Coach, do you wanna get in the picture? Yes, coaches. Congratulations.
All of those medals, I'm like being wow.
I'm gonna band-aid that my son join that club at seventy next year.
And good luck in the nationals.
Yes, good luck.
So, Kent, is it something that you can email or your your presentation? I'm just trying to figure out how to how to
Um
That's true.
Sorry?
I was just gonna see if I could work out Kent's um, you know
Well, maybe Kent can sit at at the table if you
Oh, you sure you can, I just wanna make sure is is there a a presentation for the computer or? Is, is there a, a presentation for the computer, or?
No, I, I um, I went over this with Kent, I think that the twenty-page report is.
Right, more than.
It is there, it's pretty easy to follow, it's not a dense twenty pages, and it's very, it has clear charts, yeah.
Yes, of course, I'm gonna continue it.
So you wanted to run through it, right?
Well, let's run through it, and you can comment, and you can run through.
So, do you want to start, you should do that first, Laurie.
Do it as quickly as you want. Let's do that first, yeah.
You want to do the announcement first, or you want to start with Kent?
Um, well, Kent has been waiting for a long, do you have, well, do you have long, Jill, do you have long announcements?
Sure, uh, I definitely have one.
Jenny, do you need this?
Yeah.
Um, so what, you want me to go there off lately?
Yeah. Yeah, so you have microphone.
I'll, I'll.
Okay, so we are.
Alright, we're gonna be buddies tonight, huh?
Thank you, I'll, I'll yield.
Oh, alright.
So, we're going to cover something that was meant for the work session, but we ran out of town. We have um Kent Thomas here, co-chair of the uh Sustainability Advisory Board, and we're going to talk about adoption of a greenhouse gas inventory report, and letter in support of clean energy in communities. Um, so, we've had our gas inventory, and Kent is going to go ahead.
Which one, which one do you want to start with?
Um.
Thanks. Do you want to discuss the letters, since it's short, or?
Well, you can, no, go ahead and discuss the letter first.
Okay, so the idea with the letter is that, that um.
Do you have the microphone?
Oh, I do, is this, can you hear me?
Yeah, make sure it's a close to speed.
Okay. Um, so, so there's two programs, one is Clean Energy Communities program, and the other one is Climate Smart Communities. So, Climate Smart Communities is a D E C program, um Clean Energy Communities is a N I S C R T A program. Um, there is proposal that's in front of the P S C, and N I S C R T A is part of the P S C, so that's why it's in front of them, to merge the two programs into the C S C program. The um, the C S, the C E C program has been very good to our town, as, as far as getting grants. C S C program, and, and that's one where, when you achieve certain actions, you do actually get money for, for doing what you've done. The C S C has been, there are grants available, but they're matching grants, so they're fifty, you have to put, the town has to put fifty percent up, and then they get the other fifty percent, and they have to be applied for in advance, and they're, they're a little more cumbersome than the, the C E C grants. Um, so, basically the letter is in support of trying to retain the independence of the C E C program, the way it is now, or at least hopefully get some of the grant structures, so that it's carried over into the new program. Um, because otherwise, like with, to a fifty percent match grants, a lot of times it's got to go through a budgeting process or something like that, so it's, it's a longer lead time on it. They do some, well, I can't say they're larger grants, but some of them are larger grants. But, um, so that's one of the reasons, so we would like to see that those issues, or those uh parts of the grant program continued. The other part is, we'd like to support Hudson Valley Regional Council, who is the one who supported us for both the C S C program and C E C program, and um let the P S C basically know that they have done a fantastic job, and that whatever role they, that they should play an intricate role in the programs going forward, and hopefully be able to counsel us on an ongoing basis. We, so we recently got this three hundred, two thousand five hundred dollar grant. We would not have gotten it without the Hudson Valley Regional Council and their, their aid, so that's what the letter is about.
Right, so the uh C S C coordinators would not be playing the same role as the Hudson Valley Council, is that, is that right?
The, so the, so the C E C program runs through the end of twenty twenty-five. This is, so this is a, the new program would be addressing where the C E C program would head in twenty twenty-six through twenty thirty, so becoming part of the C, the C S C program. We don't know yet exactly what is going to happen. They're pointing to there being more cohorts involved, where towns work with each other, and their experiences on the programs, but we don't exactly, it, it hasn't been fleshed out yet, it really is still in flux.
So it's a, it's a, it's a two-pronged issue. One is the losing the no-match grant funding, and the other is losing the invaluable guidance that we've gotten from the C E C. So, um, we know, we know what the budgeting problems will be, but we're, and we're not sure what the, what the future holds with the kind of guidance that's been so helpful.
So, so just. Right, and it, so if you look back.
And it's not that we won't get any, we just don't know.
Right, if you look back at C E C grants, we got a hundred thousand dollars in twenty nineteen, part of which went to the Millwood Park lighting, uh the field lighting. We got five other five thousand dollar grants for energy studies for um Chapack, this building, and the community center. We used others for uh landscape, electric landscaping equipment. Uh, we have this most recent grant, which is being analyzed and potentially going to be applied to the Chapack sole rooftop solar project. So, it's been really invaluable to us.
Yeah, and, and you also say here that the C S E grant program hasn't historically funded municipal energy projects.
Right.
So, do you think that would change based on this transition?
It, it might, so one of the big pushes is going to be with, with the state is building decarbonization. Um, so basically electrification, and in order to accomplish that, they're going to need to have, invest some money in it. Um, there was, and probably a lot of money, there, there was a, a, I don't know what to call it, but there was a, a big probe of how it would, decarbonization would have to work in the future, and it was run by somebody who had a Bedford. And they came up with the, to de, decarbonize the buildings in New York, at this point would take something like a hundred billion dollars of funding. And so even just to, to decarbonize municipal buildings is still a large amount of money, so, you know, there's gonna have to be a lot of funding.
Okay, well, I have no problem with the letter.
Thank you.
Um, does anyone have any questions for Kent?
Always appreciate you coming and talking to us and making sure that we are a climate first community, thank you, Kent.
Yes.
But he's not done yet.
Oh, okay.
He's gonna report on a big.
Um.
On our twenty-page report?
Big, big report, big report, yes.
That easily. Okay, so.
Thanking you in advance.
So, to caveat, it's one, I have this cough, I hope it doesn't interrupt us, it's, it's been very, I, it's been paid, hopefully it's been paid, but anyway. Um, the other one is the report we're gonna go over, the data was gathered approximately eighteen months ago, and the report was written about a year ago, a little, ago. You know, I, I don't have all the, I, then I had all the answers, it took my time, but now I don't now, so I have a pad, so if you have questions, I'll take them back and I will answer them for you. Just trying to share my screen.
So this will go up on the screen?
Open.
Yeah.
I'm not seeing the shared screen.
I can do it, you want?
Do what, share my screen?
I can share the report.
Okay, I have things highlighted, so you can share the report, but um.
Oh, it's either that or nothing.
Alright.
Thank you, Lauren.
You're welcome.
Alright, so. Okay, are you gonna share? Okay, so here's the report, um, cover page. Skip, so you all get credit on the second, on the next page is town board, et cetera, and Jill, everyone here, so, and, and the, this, so then, uh, we'll go through the table context.
Thank you.
And so the project scope, this was a project, again, this was part of Hudson Valley Regional Council project, and it was actually a cohort um with various communities to go through their, their municipal greenhouse gas inventories, and try and come up with where the most emissions are being created right now. Um, so, the, um, there's three pha, three phases of this, or we envision, envision three phases. So the community, or the governmental, um, if you go down to page, this is really hard, page five, please, Lauren, the project scope. Okay, so, this is the first part, which is the government greenhouse gas operations. There's going to be a community greenhouse gas up, uh, report, which has been drafted and is under review now. And hopefully, there's going to be a climate action plan that will follow using the data from these reports. And, and that will be kind of a roadmap as to where the town needs to go to decarbonize. Um, so if you want to go down a little bit, just contributors, just to give credit, Kellen Cantrell, who is here, Art Carey, and James McHugh from the Controller's Office, and Walter Koss, who was great, he told us where all the tanks are buried, so to speak. You know, with all the, where all the fuel oil is, all the propane, everything, so he was, he was really.
Nothing nefarious about that, you're correct.
He knows, he knows everything that goes on.
The tanks, not the box, it's the tanks.
Huh? It's uh, he knows everything's going on. Okay, so, um, if you want to go on to background, please, Lauren? Excuse me, so basically, we know that the emissions that are caused now, and the climate change is caused by human, um, basically, since the industrial revolution, we've been emitting these gases and causing the increase in temperature. Um, so the co, the town previously undertook the government operations greenhouse gas inventory in two thousand nine, which was based on two thousand five data. So that's serving as our base year at this point. And that mirrors the, the year that was adopted by uh most of the, the signatories to the Paris Accord. Um, so what we did analyze was town-owned buildings, the water treatment plant, um, town vehicles and public lighting, and you can go on a little bit further down, Lauren. Um, and then, so, and then electric, natural gas, fuel oil, diesel and gasoline issues. And everything is um referenced in terms of metric tons of CO2 equivalent. And we'll just say CO2 equivalent is just, it's the global warming potential of any given um fuel that's burned, and so like, or released to the atmosphere, so like methane is eighty-five times more potent than carbon dioxide. So there's a formula to adjust those emissions, so we can talk about it all in terms of if it was carbon dioxide, okay? Um, so, the sectors that we're gonna, we looked at were water delivery facilities, wastewater, which we melded into the water, uh, delivered because it's very small, buildings and facilities, vehicle fleet, public lighting. And then emissions of, okay, the emissions from the water and the water, wastewater were combined. Uh, if you want to go down to key findings, uh, please? Okay, so, the total for the town was twenty-eight hundred and ninety-six metric tons of, of CO2 equivalent. Um, and you can see here, can you go down a little bit more so we can see the chart? Okay, you can see here, the wastewater is, and so that's basically the water treatment plant and a few pumps for, uh, for, for wastewater, but it is over half of the town's greenhouse gases, right? And so it's huge, and when you get down into the costs, you'll see, you'll see also where, how it affects it. And then tied for two and, the two and three are the vehicle fleet and buildings, um, public lighting coming in behind that, okay? So, excuse me, just want to point out that, that right here, so as a, so what we did with the Millwood Water Treatment Plant is since it's seventy-two percent, the town of Newcastle and twenty-eight percent Pleasantville, these numbers only reflect Newcastle's interest in the plant. So, if you want to go down cost by sector, please? So, again, the water treatment plant and wastewater amounts fifty-seven percent of the spent cost for energy in the town. Um, and you can see in the chart that it's six hundred ninety-three thousand, buildings are next, vehicles after that, and public lighting beyond that. Um, so, energy usage by sector, um, so seventy-five percent of the electricity used in the town of Newcastle is used by basically the Millwood Treatment Plant and its satellite location, so it's pumping, pump stations, et cetera. So, it's, it, it is the most, it's, creates the most greenhouse gas, it costs the most for the town.
What, what is it for Pleasantville, do you know?
Um.
I assume it has to be the same.
It, it would be, so, this is set, this, this is seventy-two percent.
Spendage.
I could try and figure that out, but it's got, this, the seventy-two, the, what the numbers we're seeing here are the six hundred ninety-three thousand.
Disappropriate to us.
Right, so it includes our pumping stations, so it does, so, I haven't broken out just the water treatment plant itself. So the water, there's the water treatment plant, and it has a generator, it has heating, also fuel oil for heating. Um, those things are all shared between Newcastle and Pleasantville. But in this numbers also, you know, the Bedford Road Pumping Station, that, you know, all of those other ancillary locations, okay? So, alright, um, so basically, that's, that's the big one. So if you look at, go down, so, yeah, electric space by sector, so here's, here's a nice pie chart of it, Millwood Water Treatment Plant, seventy-five percent, and the other ones you can see here. Now, one of the things I tried to look at when we were doing this report was, what do other, what, what is the effect of water treatment on other towns? The only, the issue is that most other towns don't have filtration plants, there's, there's very few. Bedford built one, what, twenty years ago or something like that, and it, it, it amounts to about twenty-five percent of their, they include it in their buildings number, and it's about twenty-five percent of their emissions for the buildings. But there's nothing, there's no way for us to compare whether we're being efficient or not, or compared to any other municipality. Because most, most, this is all the river towns, everybody else that gets it from the aqueduct system, they don't filter it, so, so there's not comparison there. Alright. Excuse me. So, one of the things that also keep in mind here is that these emissions, uh, ICLI is an international organization, and they set the standards for how the emissions are dealt with. Um, so, the, um, they have what are called Scope One, which is direct emissions from fuel oil, natural gas, all of those types of things. Scope Two, which is basically indirect, which is electricity. And Scope Three, which is other services, so purchased items and uh, um, solid waste, things like that, which we did not use Scope Three in this report, we didn't, we didn't report on, it wasn't required as part of this. But one other thing I'm gonna say is that, the way ICLI requires that you report is that you have to report based on energy generation in your sector, okay? So, even if the town or whoever is buys or, or contracts for clean energy for somewhere else, you're not actually getting that energy delivered to you, those electrons, where they're, they're probably being used somewhere near where they were generated, they're not being delivered to you. And in order to not double count any of the numbers, it's basically considered where the origin of the energy is as to what the greenhouse gas emissions are. So that clean energy is produced upstate hydro or whatever, makes that grid really clean, or that area really clean. There's three, um, EPA has E, what they call E grid numbers, and these grids are, in, in New York, there's upstate New York, there's Westchester and New York City, which were in, and there's Long Island. And so the cleanest one is upstate, because they have so much hydro, and, and that they're, they're really clean, Long Island is very dirty.
So, upstate is, is, is that everything outside of Westchester?
Yeah, it's really, is, is that really, it's upstate. Some people, they're, yeah, Westchester's upstate, but we know it's not, it's not, okay.
Wow, more relevant. It's basically the whole state.
Right, almost. Um, so we chose twenty twenty-one as the, as the year to analyze, because we were trying, we were starting to normalize after, um, the, after COVID, and so the numbers may not, may not completely normal, they're pretty close. Um, so it was the first year that we had really complete data for. Um, so if you want to go down to that ta, table A, please, Lauren? Um, so just to see, there were thousands of data points that we analyzed in this, and this is some of what was there. So, we have twenty-two NITEB accounts, that they supplied the energy for, and thirteen CONEd. Um, Chapack at that point was not being directly billed to us, so it was through, I don't know, who would overbill, I don't know, Paul Brothers, whoever it was.
Some, some. Yeah.
Um, so we, we had, we got that money from, uh, or those, that data from an energy report. And then there's other CONEd accounts for natural gas and, and fuel oils, et cetera, so that's where all these came from. Um, so, the, um, there was a tool that was used that Hudson Valley Regional Council, um, obtained, um, from someone upstate who, who does this thing. And uh, and we put all the numbers into that, and it kind of massaged them, and it's basically a glorified spreadsheet, but it, it spit out what all the greenhouse gas emissions were. And so, the, the categories are buildings and facilities, water and wastewater, public lighting and vehicle fleet. Um, now something, emissions factors, this is just, go down to emissions factors, please, Lauren? But, so, one of the goals of, there was a twenty-eleven climate action plan, and it was, and it was based on the previous greenhouse gas inventory report, and they did the, there was a reduction of twenty percent, was what was deemed to be required or wanted by twenty fifteen. Um, what happened in twenty twenty is that the grid got much dirtier because of the closing of, of uh Indian Point, okay? And just between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-two, it got forty-seven percent dirtier. So, eat, a lot of the progress that we were making was reversed because of that. And then it actually went up to fifty-nine percent by twenty, but actually by twenty twenty-two, twenty, it was forty-seven by twen, twenty twenty-three, or twenty twenty-one, I'm sorry. Um, so, we took a hit there, and so it's, they had to bring three other, uh. Um so we took a hit there, and so it's they had to bring three other uh fossil fuel plants online for that, so. So the results are, um you know, we saw this before in the summary, that it's really the water treatment plant that is the biggest. Um and you could, you know, the thought is we should do is possibly doing a study on the water treatment plant. You have to separate the HVAC and lighting and and those from the mechanicals. And I have no idea, I have no idea about how the mechanicals work, or their efficiency, or anything like that. So uh let's go. So so that's the biggest one. The vehicle fleet was next, and we did see some reductions in the vehicle fleet. Um you can look at the pie charts, it's not really, it's it's you know, TPW is the biggest, followed by the Police Department. Um in buildings and facilities, um CHAP PAC is is up there as far as greenhouse gas emissions um within the rec department area. Um so and then there is a pie chart, if you go down to Lauren, page sixteen, the pie chart, the by administration facility. Yeah, keep going. Okay, so here I'll show you by building how much. And we excluded the waste, the uh water treatment plant because we cannot differentiate between what goes into lighting versus what goes into the mechanicals. So we, there's no way to differentiate that, so that that's why it's not in here. We can't, we can't take the building shell itself separately, so. Um now, public lighting, in two thousand seventeen, there was a a project to replace all of the streetlights with LED streetlights, which we saw a dramatic decrease in the amount of energy consumed. Uh for some reason, it went back up again. But one of the things that's in public light lighting also is, it's like it's like Bank of America, there's compact, two compacters back there behind Village Market, Allen Place, there's a compactor there. So it's not all just exclusively lighting. There are other things that are lumped in with that.
We really can't get any better on that if we're at sort of peak technology now, if we replaced all our lights, or not all, but overall, the amount of them.
Right, right. I I don't, yeah, I we we did see that drop. And supposedly, you know, if you replace incandescents or sodium lights with uh with LEDs, generally you get an eighty to ninety ninety percent reduction
Right.
in in energy consumption. So um so fuel oil, the the Millwood Water Treatment Plant for its for heating is is the largest consumer. Um and then gasoline and diesel is, you know, it's not as large. And natural gas, there's only, there's three town-owned buildings that use natural gas, this one, the community center. And it's actually not a building, it's a it's a facility of the uh water treatment system, water distribution system, I should say. Um so here's the emissions by energy source. So electricity is the biggest by far, um but that's not, that's to be expected. Fuel oil, um and gasoline, diesel and natural gas all contribute, but not dramatically. Um so here's the cost by source.
Is propane zero because it's not used or just it's so small?
It's so small.
Okay.
Okay, so here's the cost of energy by source, so electricity. Uh you wanna go down a little more, Lauren, to the next page there, the pie chart. So electricity is almost a million dollars a year. This is twenty twenty-one numbers. And fuel oil, hundred and three, gasoline ninety-three, et cetera. So it's.
It's gotta be significantly higher because we had that that bump with Con Edison, everyone up. So it's gotta be much higher now.
The demand rising.
Um okay. Most of your accounts are NIPAD, you're getting you get ninety percent of your energy roughly from from NIPAD. Um okay, so twenty twenty twelve, two thousand five versus twenty twenty-one comparison. Um we don't have all the numbers, all the details from from twenty 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 five, oh sorry, two thousand five, so I can't really validate all of the numbers. But here's the here's the changes, if you wanna go down to get the the bar chart plus the the table in it. So in essence, wastewater or and water treatment went down about sixteen percent. The fleet went down twenty-nine percent, buildings went down nineteen percent. The fleet I attribute to probably cafe standards, better fuel efficiency. Um uh but lighting, for whatever reason, and I I don't know, and that's one of the reasons I mentioned before, there's compactors and other things on those accounts because it did go up between the two. So I I cannot explain it, I mean, so. All right, so um this just details further. Um and then by scope, so Scope One is again fossil fuels. And we went down, it went down thirty-two percent between the two years. And then Scope Two, which is electricity, went down seven point three. And the total being eighteen point nine there. Um so that was the reduction in greenhouse gas emission. So if we go to the summary, so um although, so this report provides an upper granularity that it can, it will be able to be used for a climate action plan. Um and we would love to see a climate action plan, we'd love to see it budgeted for and done over the next year or two, when however we can. And it can be a roadmap for the town as to how it proceeds forward with decarbonization. Um and it can also incorporate some of the the CLCPA, they did a scoping document December twenty twenty-two, which outlines when different thing, different vehicles have to be electrified, or you know, buildings decar- carbon, the grid has to be uh decarbonized, et cetera. So it can follow that. But what what we've, what has been done is to transition so far to reduce it, transitioning streetlights, here it says upgrading fifty-seven fifty-seven percent of the lighting fixtures in town-owned buildings, it's well beyond that at this point. Um adding electric vehicle and a hybrid, converting community center to natural gas, and the solar wall, which is for heating, not for solar, not photovoltaic. It's just for heating, the the treatment plant. So the recommendations going forward is stand what you would expect is more rooftop solar, solar canopy is where we can, geothermal heating and cooling, um and it should also include air source here, not just geothermal. Um and air source has been, you know, Bobo's, the train station, an air source heat pump was put in there. Um is a replacement for, I don't know if it's fuel oil or natural gasses was part of this study. Um transitioning the fleet to EVs and electric landscaping equipment, decreased solid waste generation and green or broken up policies. Um so we have to check back from time to time and see how we're doing. Um so this inventory needs to be reported. Um it says in here every year, it is doable every year, but it would have to be done by like an interim or something like that. I mean, you can go every few years. I I'd say for the Scope Three emissions, I said eight years, and every five years, I think is adequate.
So can, no, can I have a just an overall question?
Yep.
And I'm curious as to how you think we can manage these different variables. Um so I mean, the presumption, of course, is that we wanna reduce these greenhouse gas emissions, and the lower we go, the better we've done. But there are so many other factors to account for here in terms of interests that the town has. So just one small example would be the use of CHAP PAC. We wanna increase that use as our community theater. So if we do that, then naturally, you know, the the power usage would increase. And so whatever improvements we might make in green greenhouse gas reductions would be sort of obviated by whatever progress we made in increasing the use of CHAP PAC. So that's just one example. Um
Well, CHAP PAC is.
There are a lot of, you know.
CHAP PAC has, I was gonna say, there's two parts to CHAP PAC, because you you know, CHAP PAC, there's the energy usage, but there's also the demand metering part of it, which I'm not gonna get into the details of it, but uh about sixty percent of the average month bill is demand usage. So you can, you know, so just supplying the energy is doesn't solve the whole problem. So there's a study going on now about using, it's called peak shaving, by using battery storage. Um so that you can store the energy, and then when you have have peak loads, which I don't know when they are, I'd love to see the data, I'd like to be involved in the analysis. Um but I imagine that the peak is where, when there's performances in the evening, because you don't have any solar, you don't have anything, or you wouldn't have any solar that's supplying it, and you have high demand usage. And so I think that's where they are, but I don't know for sure. So but e- energy management systems can be designed to store the energy when necessary and anticipate these events coming up. A surprise event like last night where you had to move it to the to the chat pack, maybe not, but for a lot of them, it certainly can.
Okay.
But another example, let me finish this, Holly. So another example, for instance, would be the the facility we're building in Amsterdam. So that's, you know, growth and development. And so we would have instances like that, and what I'm wondering is how we make a comparison from one year to the other based on growth factor and growth in the community and and further development of the community. For instance, if we build a bigger town hall with a a wonderful community center and all of these amenities, of course, that's gonna increase greenhouse gas emissions, but it doesn't mean that we're doing worse in in the efforts that we're making. So is there is there a way to calculate for for these variables? So that we, you know, we have more of an apples to apples comparison, because if we go down the line, five years from now, ten years from now, I'm afraid that, you know, the comparison might not be really accurate.
Right, so it you would have to consider the delta between what this building, if you did a new town hall, between what this building was using and the greenhouse gases that were generated from it, and the new one, and create a baseline based on that. So that you can look going forward to see how that building is performing. Now, hopefully, a new town hall would consume potentially less energy than this town hall does
Potentially, right.
because we want everything to be much more efficient. Hopefully, there's solar and green roof and, you know, all of those kinds of things that would mitigate the uh the energy consumption. So it may be actually be less. So in so in these reports, though, also, CHAP PAC came between the two thousand five and two thousand uh twenty-one, greenhouse gas inventories, we acquired CHAP PAC or made a deal for CHAP PAC. So those numbers got added into here, so they also diluted the effectiveness of of our greenhouse gas reductions.
Right, so I'm just saying, in in assessing our progress, we have to take many, many factors into account.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, can Holly?
Yes, so I just wanted to remark on CHAP PAC. Uh it feels like that's one to explore quite a bit, given that for its utilization relative to, say, the town hall, it's generating an awful lot of greenhouse gases. So I feel like um then there may be some low hanging fruit that we can explore in CHAP PAC.
Um well, there's already been quite a bit done on CHAP PAC, right? There was a a new roof, during the new roof, there was at least some insulation added to the roof, I know. Not as much as you would want it.
Right.
Go ahead.
No, no.
Um that's my understanding, so that they could put solar on the on the roof. Um there may be some other envelope and insulation that can be done. I don't, I I have, there was an energy study back in twenty twenty-two, I've never, I haven't really completely digested that. Uh or if that is sufficient, I know Jill, right, you wanted to do another one. Last September, you tried to get funding for uh an additional study.
Just because we we think it's got real potential for installation of solar, maybe even battery storage to be more efficient in our uses of the electricity that we'll be generating, so that it coincides with our demands, which we expect to be in the evening when solar isn't being generated. So we're in the midst of it, Sabrina's been spearheading it, uh we've been working with uh Leo Wegman um from Sustainable Westchester, Kent has been valuable, he knows communications, so we're on it. We're 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 hoping by the end of the year that we'll have some real progress.
Yeah, it sounds like CHAP PAC is a good place to focus. The other question I had for you was, when, I know we started with phase one, which was the governmental um inventory, and you said part two will be community. What's encompassed in the community and because coming down to, would that include the school district, which is probably a very large um generator of greenhouse gases within our Newcastle environment?
Right, so um it would include the school district. Um it's basically, it's all buildings within the town borders. Um and I'm getting a little geeky or whatever, but but it it's a great compared to the last community greenhouse gas inventory we had, which which was done by another organization, mid Hudson organization. But they had to kind of guess on a lot of things. We now have all of the data from utilities, so we have electric data, we have natural gas data. The fuel oil suppliers are required to to submit their data, so we have a lot of precise information that we never used to. There's still a lot of things that have to be guessed at, but we do have more accurate numbers that are gonna be coming out of this inventory. But so and and just as a matter of scale, the community greenhouse gas inventory dwarfs the town by, so town is a little less than three thousand. The two thousand ten community was over three hundred thousand metric tons, so it's far different.
Not surprised.
And you know, so we're also trying, gonna try and do, the SAB is trying to start a, we filed for a clean energy um and cooling and heating campaign. We're gonna try and get the adopt residents to adopt air source heat pumps and geothermal. And there's, my understanding is there's a solarized campaign in Sustainable Westchester, could be running countywide coming down this summer. So incorporating those, it would be energy smart homes, because those are all aspects of decarbonizing homes and electrifying.
Um, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Kent?
Okay.
Okay, thank you for all this work, Kent. We really appreciate it, and thank you for waiting.
All right, thank you, yeah. Yep, my pleasure.
Keeping you here.
Okay.
Much appreciated.
Okay, dinner time.
Okay. Have a good night, Kent.
Okay.
Thanks, Lauren.
So now we're going to turn to, let me get my agenda. Okay, um just some, um have a few, few, well, I have an one announcement that I don't really want to make. But um I I just want to let people know that there was some unfortunate damage done to the Casey Town field at Upper Getney. Um someone decided to drive all over that field and and they ruined it. And it's a field that our students use, it's a memorial for Casey Town. It it it's really, it's really sad. And I just wanna let the community know, because when these things happen, maybe feel it, you know, whoever did it, it's remote, nobody will know, and it's kind of funny. It's really sad for everyone. It hurts our students because they can't use the field. Certainly, it costs the town money. But the fact that it was also the memorial field makes it really sad. So um I'm sorry to report this to the town, we don't usually report things like this at a town board meeting, but I felt it was really important enough to note this and let people know. And if you happen to know who did it, I'm not asking um necessarily to point fingers, but I think that people need to have a realization of the fact that they, their actions really hurt others. And that's really the bottom line. Just the knowledge that you have hurt other people, I think is punishment enough. Um we'd like to know who did it, to have a conversation, but really, I mean, there's a financial component to this. But it, this is not just some victimless thing. So anyhow, that's all I have to say about it. Um Jill, is there anything more that you know about what was done to the field?
No, just obviously tire tracks that, you know, uh you know, destroyed the turf. So um we're hoping that uh, you know, Ike's guys will be able to, uh the Parks crews will be able to go out there and restore it in time so that it doesn't delay any of the kids being able to, you know, start for soccer. But it's just disappointing.
Do you know, to what extent the tire tracks, are they all over the field or just, we're not sure yet.
Ugh.
Okay, all right, enough said. Okay, we will move on. Um I I just wanna report that uh yesterday, we had an incredibly uh meaningful and memorable Yom HaShua ceremony for the, our fifth annual Holocaust remembrance ceremony um at CHAP PAC. It was meant to be, uh speaking of use of facilities, it was meant to be at the Holocaust Memorial, but because of impending rain, we very quickly switched to CHAP PAC, and it was a full house. It was so um heartwarming. And I wanna thank the Holocaust and Human Rights Committee, their co-chairs Stacy Science and Ally Rosenberg, and the Enough Club at the high school. And now there's an Enough Club junior at Seven Bridges Middle School, um and the Enough Club High School co-chairs, um Ben Prober and Elliot Science. And I I don't know that the middle school has co-chairs, but I thank their advisors, and they did a fantastic job. Um I also wanted to thank State Senator Pete Harkam uh for attending, as well as Assemblyman Chris Burdick, County Executive George Latimer, Deputy County Executive Ken Jenkins, we had our representative Darlene Breenza from Congressman Mike Lawler's office, we had former Congressman Mondaire Jones in attendance. And um the guest speaker was a Holocaust survivor. And um the guest speaker was a Holocaust survivor, rabbinic pastor Eliza Herbert, who gave her an incredibly moving story and um. It was noted that our children are the last generation to hear from survivors, so it's particularly important. Um, so it was an incredibly moving ceremony and I wanna thank all, and and of course, I wanted to thank Jill and the town staff and Ike and the rec department for. You know, organizing all of the logistics. Also, uh, prior to that, on the weekend, I want to announce that there was a Millwood Fire Station annual inspection. It was, um, I attended along with Holly, she was there, Senator Pete Harkum and Assemblyman Chris Burdick were also there, just to show you how much they they get around. They have other districts represented, they were there too. And um, this was uh Millwood Fire Station and they did an incredible job, their equipment was in tip top shape. It's so impressive, I mean, you you could eat off the trucks, that's how clean off the floor uh of uh the firehouse, that's how clean it was. So I wanna thank the Chief Jorge Rodriguez and Assistant Chiefs Greg Santone and Robert McCarthy, and also there were so many neighboring departments there. Um, there there was Osinang, Mount Kisco, York County, Hallow, Croton, um, I don't know if I'm forgetting Holly, do you remember? There were fire.
Bedford and Chapua.
Ben, from all over, of course, Chapua, yeah, um, so far they've responded to hundred and seven incidents and they're over three hundred a year, so anyway. They do a fantastic job, it was a fantastic event. And the last thing I wanna let people know is, coming up about a month from now is, um. Uh, an event that's called Into the Light, which is going to be on June ninth and we'll start advertising for it. It's a walk for mental wellness. That is something that was started by by this organization Into the Light and Pleasantville has been doing it for a long time. Um, I wanna thank Akiko Roy of our community for putting this together. It's a walk, um, it's in partnership with Break the Hold, it's to reduce the stigma associated with mental wellness and to promote education on suicide prevention. It's going to take place, it's a. It's a walk literally nighttime walk into the light, it starts at six thirty A M. On June ninth to six A M, it will begin at Bell and there'll be a a walking uh map and it will end at the gazebo. And it's a it's a very moving time and people walk in the darkness and into when the sunrise is coming up. And it's it's a supportive event and I understand that it's been very successful in Pleasantville, very meaningful. So we we thank Akiko Roy for putting this into action and we'll do it with in conjunction with the town and with Newcastle United for Youth. Um. Okay, that's it for announcements, Jill, do you have the supervisor's report?
I just wanna take the opportunity to remind everyone, today is the last day to pay your town, county and special district taxes. Um, you can still go online at mynewcastle dot org, you can go to mynewcastle dot org. And initiate an A C H transfer to pay your taxes, they will be on time up until midnight tonight. If you try to pay using an electronic bank check, it will not get to us on time, so please, if you have not paid your taxes and you'd like to pay. Please initiate an A C H transfer tonight for our website, thank you.
Hey, is that it, oh, one more, one more plug, and I talked about this during the work session, but.
Please.
Once again, it can't be said too often, but we have our um envision Newcastle. Envisioning sessions for town owned lands with twenty three acres surrounding the train station. Um, it's for what you envision for these twenty three acres in terms of what you'd like to see, what you need. What amenities you think your community should have, and one of the things we discussed was a new town hall with. Um, a community center that could accommodate facilities for all of the programs that we would like to see, and that's just one example of what can happen, so there'll be a walking tour. On um Saturday, May fourth, starting at ten, do I have the town, the time right? I don't have it written down, going by memory and I shouldn't do that. That sounds, that sounds right. There will be a walking tour starting uh on May fourth at the train station at. And steering it all day, I think it is.
Ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock. Um, also, there's a dedicated website where you can take a walking tour online. Or you can go online and go in person on your own and take a walking tour um with instructions online. Also, there will be envisioning sessions at Bell Middle School on Monday, May sixth. These will be, Jill, can you give me the time for those? Six to nine. Six to nine, and then Wednesday, May. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it's, I'm sorry, on the sixth, it's seven to nine, forgive me. Yeah, six to nine is on. Then again, on the fifteenth. Okay, same time, seven to nine and on Wednesday, the fifteenth. Again, seven to nine. Same time from seven to nine, so it's important that everyone participate and we hope to see you all. There and there will be um opportunities to participate on the website as well. Okay. Just, um, one, uh, two things I wanted to mention is, um, uh, our Memorial Day Parade is coming again this year on May twenty seventh. Um, ten thirty at Victory Corners, steps off at Ridgewood Terrace, um, at eleven o'clock. Uh, our dignitaries have been notified, uh, our community groups um have received mailings. It'll be, um, details about it will be in the e-newsletter and we're very excited for another terrific event this year. Thank you, Jill. Okay, that takes us to public comment. Um, if you have a public comment, please come up and state your name and your address and we will be taking a public comment. Um, for residents who are present and then people online, so please come up to the microphone. Well, anyone, anyone can speak at public comment.
Hi, my name is Jacqueline Panzon, my address is forty two Hardscrabble Hill Road, Chapua, New York. Um, so I'm just concerned about what's being said about the recreation department, I've been a resident here for ten years. Uh, we have several neighbors, friends that have been part of our community for anywhere from twenty to thirty five years and up until this February. There was never a delay as far as people that lived in the town of Mount Pleasant on our Parry Chapua School District. And I can say that we were all closed out of the spring registration, even though there was the town reversal, it happened a day late. But. Looking at the statistics, it's about nine percent of the kids are in the town of Mount Pleasant that are in the Chapua School District. So I understand that there is difficulty with the amount of kids that want to be enrolled in these programs, but we're talking about a very small number of students. And we're talking about excluding them from being with their friends, and that's what's concerning to me. Um. The other thing I just wanted to bring up as well is looking at the town of Mount Pleasant, um, yes, we have the opportunity to enroll in their programs. What I saw today when researching the various communities of our Parry Chapua School District and those those surrounding areas, nobody has a delay in their registration. Everybody has the opportunity as a non-resident as part of that central school district to pay an additional fee, but register on time. And that's what I'm looking for to be considered when we're talking about our students. Uh, my daughter Riley did the rec program in the the fall, she loved doing the Gaga program, it was wonderful. Um, so those were the couple of the questions I had for the board.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Becca Mack over at three Woodbridge Court in Chapua, New York. So, um, I'm actually the incoming vice chair of the P T A for the Roaring Brook Elementary School and the following year will be the head of the P T A. I have three children in the district and I happen to live point three miles over the Newcastle border in Hardscrabble Lake. And I stand here disappointed and dismayed that we are again dealing with an ill thought out policy of division and disunity in a place where I thought my neighbors and I were welcome. Back in February, Supervisor Tip made it clear that all fair options would be considered for making sure that C C S D tax paying families. Were given a fair opportunity to enroll in Newcastle programs and that these changes would be discussed and well communicated before they they were enacted. Clearly, these were falsehoods. This policy is unchanged from the one that drew so much rightful ire and ridicule back in February, it appears that no attempt was made to consider an alternative policy. Um, building off what my my colleague just said, charging non-residents a higher fee so that you could hire more staff, so everyone could participate, not just anointed few. We, a lot of us would be aligned with that, I know I would be personally. The board simply went back to what was easy rather than what was right, and this policy divides our town, separates friends and makes an entire community of Chapua schoolchildren feel excluded. So if this policy is enacted, I will ensure that Roaring Brook does not allow any of its facilities to be used by Chapua recreation programs as our tax dollars. Should not be funding programs where facilities, where populations of children are treated as literal second class citizens from their classmates. I will work with my counterparts at other schools to make sure that they do the same, including the bus company. There's no reason why Hardscrabble Lake residents can't take our business and spending dollars to stores in Mount Pleasant. When we move our business, we will be sure to tell the Chapua businesses owners why we've done this and who is responsible. So when I volunteer my time at my children's school and when I'm the president of the P T A, I will not treat any child differently or advantage any child just because they don't live in my community. One would think that this is a basic concept which our children easily understand, but apparently is too much to be asked for from this board, thank you.
Well, I must say, as a former president of the P T A myself, I never would have thought of using my title in that particular way. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Jennifer Butler, my address is nineteen Pebblebrook Way, Chapua, New York. My family has lived at our Chapua P O address for the last nine years, I have two children in the Chapua Central School District. Where I log thousands of volunteer volunteer hours, including most recently as the P T A Chair of Roaring Brook. I also work at a local fitness studio on Greeley Avenue. My husband Michael serves as First Lieutenant of the Chapua Volunteer Ambulance Corps, where he logs a minimum twenty four hours of service every single week. Including all throughout the COVID pandemic. We may live in Mount Pleasant, but my family is heavily involved and invested in Chapua, loyally supporting both the town and the school district. Therefore, I am disappointed and honestly gobsmacked and I love that word and I hate having to use it here and how thoughtlessly the situation is being handled. There has been a lack of transparency, lack of transparency and utterly abysmal communication. From the rude and misguided rec and parks announcement in February that non-residents are not quote true and quote residents. To the repeat inclusion of the two week delay clause in last week's newsletter flyer to tonight's work session. Which culminated in one of the meeting attendees asking at the conclusion of the meeting whether a decision had actually been made. My understanding is that the decision from tonight's work session, and please correct me if this is if this is not correct, is that for non-residents, those of us who call Chapua home. But do not pay property taxes to Newcastle will now have a two day delay in our ability to register for programs. Whereas residents, including those who rent homes in Chapua and pay no property taxes to Newcastle, can all register right away. So this year, on the go camp, the camper middle schoolers sold out in a matter of minutes. So a two day delay is honestly an insult. By adopting this policy, you are ostracizing a small group of Chapua School District students, less than nine percent of the total number of students in the entire district. And effectively making it impossible for them to partake in Newcastle's most popular programming. This is not a solution, it is segregation, and I simply do not understand how this is acceptable to you as representatives of a town that prides itself on inclusion. I urge the town board and the rec and parks department to come up with a true compromise. Such as a non-resident registration fee as has been mentioned by the previous speakers, while giving all Chapua Central School District students an equal opportunity to access programming, thank you.
I would just wanna point one comment, people who rent should not be treated any different and they pay a rent which covers presumably taxes. So I I don't think that would be a fair comparison, I think people who rent are still paying those expenses here in the community.
You can take it out there if you want to, yeah, just.
Um, my name is Erica Weiss, thirty nine Hardscrabble Hill Road in Chapua, New York, um, I echo what everybody has already said and as you can tell, we are very heated. Um, this is not about anything other than community and we appreciate, you know, I I. The parks and recs, people who were involved earlier left and I'm, that's unfortunate that they're not here to listen to what we, what our thoughts are and what we have to say. We appreciate the fact that they cannot, that they do not have the capacity for all this, we are not suggesting that it is an easy fix to start bringing in staff. We're not saying, please give our kids all of these spots, make room for these two hundred and twenty eight, I believe that's the number, Mount Pleasant. Chapua students um in town camp, we're saying, give us an equal shot to ha- to go to these programs. And to have the experiences that their friends are having, we we, it's about the community and it's about being part of something, as Jen's indicated, as Becca's indicated. We're all donating our time and our energy to the P T A, to C V A, to to shopping in our towns, to visiting our restaurants, to spending our weekends at the farmer's market. This is where we live, I appreciate that there are services in in Mount Pleasant, I don't know them, I don't spend my time there, I'm sure they're lovely. My kids don't go to school with them, they wanna go here, so. We're heated and I don't think that Becca using her position as P T A president to do something that is right. Should be disparaged in any way, certainly not in a situation like this. Um, and I just want you to give our children the opportunity to spend time with their friends after school, two days, the two day wait, it's a shutout. So I appreciate that you're trying to do something better than the two week, um, but it's effectively the same thing, um, as everybody has said and as I think we can speak. Um, for many people, if there needs to be an additional charge for the use of for the um registration because we don't pay taxes to Newcastle, I think we're okay with that.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Christina Riplon, I live at sixty nine Leroy Road in Chapua. I second everything that um the prior speakers have so eloquently expressed. Um, one additional point maybe is that I don't think we're hurting just the children of non-residents in quotes. Resident children whose best friend or group of friends they want to do an activity with, they will not have that ability now. So it's not just from our non-resident kids' perspective, we're also harming the resident kids, if you guys are focused on just that population of children. Which again, I echo my my fellow speakers, that is, you know, um, unfortunate. Um, it doesn't just impact them, it impacts resident children as well, who won't be able to attend these programs with their friends, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Karim Armas, thirty eight, Hardscrabble Roads, uh, two days, two weeks, two years, it really doesn't matter, I mean, I think that. If you delay registration to these programs by two minutes and it's too late, I think the only solution probably is let us pay more. But allow us equal access to these uh to these programs. I mean, you want to create inclusion, not exclusion and by doing this what you're doing right now or that you propose to do, you're just gonna create exclusion. And that's just not right, that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Alice Faye, twenty five Hardscrabble Hill Road, I don't really have anything new to add, I just wanted to reiterate what my neighbors have so eloquently stated. Um, I will share that when the news came out shockingly in February, my daughter was crying that night, wait, I'm not a part of Chapua. I can't go on the ski trip, she's a fifth grader, very much looking forward to the ski trip, um, which closed out at ten zero zero on the dot. I got in for my son the past two years and my dear friend, who is a true Chapua resident, um, was closed out by ten oh one, that's how fast. So two days will do nothing for some of the larger programs as we've already established, we support local businesses willingly, we wanna see the town thrive. Um, and it's really hurtful to see how they are excluding our children when we are more than happy to pay more uh to get in at the same time as we always have. I do wanna add that it's been very concerning the lack of communication and that even the town officials seemed so confused. Uh, when it first came out in February, some people said, well, this is the way it always is, so I sent the screenshot of when the town program opened and my ten oh one registration. And I could go back through the records for the eight years that my family has owned a house here uh to show the same. And even just as recently as today, yesterday, actually, Vicki finally got back to my email from February, I appreciate that, um, saying that you.
Uh, excuse me, I did. Uh, excuse me, I did answer that question. We got multiple emails, and I answered that question um in newsletters and on Facebook. And you know, I'm sorry if we got thirty, forty, fifty letters, that I didn't answer yours in particular, but you knew the answer at the time.
Well, the answer was that you were reverting back to the previous policy.
The answer was that we were keeping the status quo so that people wouldn't be inconvenienced this summer. We felt it was unfair to change the rules that we had, you know, perhaps inadvertently um established.
I wish I heard it was Becca's.
And I did, I I felt, I know, I know how you feel, but I just wanna say that I promised to keep the status quo for this summer, which I did. And I also wanna point out that you did have the answer. So I I don't want you to make it sound that I didn't answer you since February.
Well, I didn't get a reply to the email I sent you directly.
Yeah, that is not. Didn't get a personal reply directly.
I don't go on Facebook for information.
But you but we did answer in the town newsletter and in a lot of places.
Right.
So you knew what the answer was.
Right, but not from the source. I'm just saying that when I got the reply to your email yesterday,
You did not. No. Oh.
there still seems to be confusion. Again, as someone had already stated when the the meeting ended earlier this evening, someone that was sitting at your table said, wait, so what's the conclusion? And that's how we felt.
She was confir- she was confirming something.
Okay, I just wish there was better communication. I don't go to Facebook for any information. Um, I did go on this week uh just to the Chappaqua moms to see what was going on in terms of this issue, but it was concerning that different people in the town-
It was in all, it was in all the town newsletters, but you may not get them because you're not a resident.
Noted.
I just realized that. Anyone can sign up. I I communicated all of this, and you can sign up for our newsletters.
Sure, of course.
Great, thank you. I do believe I get them, but-
Your welcome. I mean, this is a serious co- this is a serious suggestion to you. It's not a joke.
I do get your emails. I do get the town updates, if that's what you're suggesting.
If- Okay.
But there was no, you know, formal retraction that I'm aware of of the true resident comment.
There was nothing to retract.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not sure, I'm not sure what comment you're talking about to retract.
There's nothing to retract. Just the about the whole confusion. I apologize that I keep looking back. Am I the speaking time? Can I help me out here? I don't know.
No, no, no.
Um, there was the only, the at first we were told that only um true residents could register on time, and that's the way it always was.
I I I don't know what the term, the term true residence, I don't know where that came from, but-
Was it better one-
The parks and rec, okay, that was parks and rec.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Okay.
Because my children like to believe that they are true residents. And as I shared, my daughter was crying the night that she felt like she wasn't. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Hi, Amanda Lewis, forty-four Hardscrabble Road, Hill Road. Um, unlike some of my neighbors, I haven't lived here for a long time. I moved here last week. Um, and one of the things that drew me about Chappaqua was that I heard it was such a close-knit community, so inclusive, um, really great schools. I have two kids who started Roaring Brook last week. They were welcomed with open arms, and it's been great so far. Um, but I was, I'm really disappointed by what I'm hearing today. Um, before I moved here, I posted on the Moms Group and I said, you know, I have two little kids, they're moving mid-year. How can I help integrate them into the community? And I was flooded with responses and links to Newcastle softball, lacrosse, town camp, soccer. And I clicked on the link, I tried to sign up for camp, I didn't get in, but I signed up for softball. They started last week, they've made friends, it's been great. Um, and now I'm really concerned that this, I already feel like in a town divided. Um, one of my kids came home and said, Mom, we don't live in Chappaqua. And I was like, what are you talking about? My only guess is that she's heard what's going on, you know. We model the values for our kids that we want them to have. And it's a value to me to be inclusive, to not discriminate, to not talk about our children as taxpayers, but to include them as um children who we want them to build the skills of teamwork and um, you know, stick-to-it-ness and all the things that teams teach our kids. And I've heard in the working session that this is a capacity issue. And that sounds legitimate, um, but I would challenge you that this solution does not solve the capacity issue. You still have kids that want to be a part of something that can't. You're just picking and choosing which kids are winners and which are losers. Um, and I would, you seem like a group of smart, creative people, and it's it's not clear to me that we've done as a community everything we can do to problem-solve and to think creatively and how to address this capacity issue so that we aren't hurting any kids. Thank you.
Um, anyone else?
Hi, my name is Komal Malik. Um, I'm at thirty-three Hardscrabble Hill Road. And obviously, I agree with all my neighbors here. Um, and I just wanted to come up and say, I said, my kids, actually, my husband has lived in Mount Pleasant for almost forty-nine years, I would say. Went to Roaring Brook, went to Greeley, went to Bell. And my mother-in-law was shocked because she's like, I had been registering my kids since they were in preschool. So she was shocked when we showed her the email back in February. So this it sounds seems kind of strange, this is happening after forty, almost fifty years, probably. I'm aging my husband right now. Um, the other thing is, I have to say, I'm kind of disappointed because whenever the town needs help, I get letters for me. I mean, Jill reached out to me last week. My Girl Scouts are the ones who are all Newcastle, who are actually all Mount Pleasant girls speaking at the parade.
Yep.
So whenever there's something is needed from us, we're asked to help. But then when our kids want to want to be included with someone, it feels like they're being segregated and not being allowed to do it. So please take that into consideration.
Anyone else, um- Anyone else in the audience for a public comment?
Yeah.
Uh, Virchilla, no, you can hear me. Oh, sorry, you can go on.
Oh, sorry.
Just a minute, just a minute. We'll get to online comments in a minute.
Okay.
Hi, I'm uh Mona Serepinian. Uh, I've been a Mount Pleasant uh living in Hardscrabble Hill Road for eight years. Uh, both of my daughters are in Newcastle softball, grew up uh going to Newcastle softball. One is in um varsity now. And I think back to what if they weren't allowed to be a part of that softball team? And would they be in the varsity team right now? Such an important part of their lives. And I, it makes me sad that now our, you know, the future kids are not getting the same opportunity. Um, with timing, obviously, that's uh what's happening. Um, and what else did I say? And it's the parents. The parents are the coaches uh in these teams. And there's a lot of Mount Pleasant uh parents that are in these teams. My husband was a basketball coach. Um, you know, we've got softball coaches that are in Mount Pleasant. And it just seems, you know, like we're contributing in every way possible. And we are willing to pay a little bit more for uh to be a part of, you know, the Newcastle. All right, please.
Thank you.
Um, my name is Jaya Gurshahani. I'm at seven sixty-five Hardscrabble Road. I've lived in Chappaqua for about four years now, and I'm an active volunteer for the Chappaqua PTA. I run the Science Alun Theater Program at Bell. And I just wanna, I agree with all my neighbors and uh in that that we are willing to pay an extra fee if it means that our kids can get the same opportunities as the true residents.
Good evening, my name is Fiona Havansky, and I also live on Hardscrabble Hill Road. And I live at thirty-hundred Hardscrabble Hill Road. I agree with everything else that everyone said. I don't have anything else to add besides the fact that we all contribute to this community. I'm also co-leader of Girl Scouts. And I have two dau- two daughters that have been not excluded up to this point, but I'm really saddened for the neighbors that are moving in and the younger kids that are going to be excluded if this rule goes into effect.
Hello. Um, Meredith Beckerman, seven hundred Hardscrabble Road. I don't have much to add. I think everyone said everything, but I would just like to say that I've actually, I grew up here and then I moved back. I grew up in Millwood and I ended up on the Mount Pleasant side. We didn't, this was not a thing when I was growing up. This was, no one was excluded. I had friends who lived in Mount Pleasant. I had friends who lived in Millwood, and it just, it wasn't something that was an issue. Um, I think as everyone has said, we are willing to pay more. Um, but I think we just want our kids part of the community as they should be and as they always were. And I've been here a long time.
Anyone else in the audience? Okay.
Hi, my name is Sanjana Parek, and I live at two Pebblebrook Way, Chappaqua, New York. And I moved here about three years ago. I have a son who's about to go into middle school, and my daughter is in elementary school. I agree with all my neighbors here, and I urge you and request you to please increase the fee for us. And, you know, so we can all register and they can all be at the camp and we, they can all be with their friends. It's a humble request to you guys. Thanks.
Anyone else in the audience? Um, okay, we'll take comments online. Can we get um comments on this issue? Uh, I just wanna acknowledge Lisa. I know you've been online for a while. Um, and I hope you can wait until we just finish with this one issue because I know what what you wanna talk about. Um. Alright.
Yeah, you absolutely should take everybody else first. I I can wait.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Um, anybody else online on this particular issue? We have Victoria Sorano.
Yes.
Yes, please unmute yourself. Are you, are you here to talk about um this issue?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes. Um, I'm Victoria Sorano, um, uh, at eleven Hardscrabble Hill Road. Um, I just am concerned that it doesn't, it seems like this was brought up at today's meeting without the board really um researching all of the different options, researching and seeing what goes on in the other towns around us. Um, you guys didn't really know how it goes in the other towns. You didn't know that there is no delay, that they just pay the extra fee. And it doesn't seem like all options were truly vetted. Um, especially this option that I think, I would venture to say all of us are open to paying the additional non-resident fee, um, as is the case in other towns. Um, and I just don't think it's fair to make a decision on this without fully vetting all of the options available. And here, what everybody has to say first.
Okay. Oh, sorry, are you, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. Okay, thank you. Uh, we have Yvonne Herrera.
Yes, hi, uh, I'm on twenty-four Pebblebrook Way.
Yes, hi, uh, I'm on twenty-four Pebblebrook Way.
Uh, the first thing I'll say is thank you for looking into the last-minute summer uh announcement. I was a big proponent of making sure that was postponed to make sure people have time to plan for their summer. So I appreciate that that was first, and I guess that's the reason we're here. Um, the one thing I'll say that worries me the most, and I appreciate how hard it is to fix this, to be honest. Um, but the thing is, it looks like we're not getting to the root cause of the problem. Um, and to say, I guess, the obvious, it's it's a demand and uh supply problem. We have, more people have moved into the Chappaqua Mount Pleasant area, more more people have moved into the Chappaqua Little District. So this is an ongoing problem, a good problem. We love a thriving community, and we, many of us moved here in the last couple of years. But it looks like what we're fixing right now is a little bit of a band-aid. Um, and I don't mean to be critical. I know this is not easy, again, to fix. But putting in a band-aid that will just give room for a few more of Chappaqua residents, what will happen, in my point of view, is right now we have a set of parents who are upset because their kids can't get into camp. Part of it is because there are other kids in there, right? Eh, we've done this band-aid of not allowing Mount Pleasant residents to um to be part of it. What we will have, we will still have a lot of Chappaqua kids out of camp. And we will also have created a second problem with this, with this resentment from everybody that has moved here, thinking they had access to the same community services. So I would, we should really think about this in more of a medium and longer term because e- even if we do it this year, next year, more people might be moving to Chappaqua than the next. So it is not gonna, you know, slow down. There's new generations of people coming in. I sit in my neighborhood, older people are moving out, new kids come in. I think it's true about, um, that a group generation shift is coming here. So, um, I would say like my, the previous speaker, take a little bit more time understanding all the options um versus making a quick decision tonight because it it is a band-aid. It might feel it's the right thing because you represent your taxpayers, but it will only feel, um, let everybody feeling even worse than before this problem was initiated. So that's my, my stance on the situation, and and I'm thinking for a time.
Okay, thank you. Um, now, I don't see anyone else on this.
Irina.
Irina, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, new person came in. Irina Lovrek?
Yeah, hi. Um, can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, I also live on uh Hardscrabble Hill Road. Uh, so I second everything I heard on our record. Um, I, that I completely agree with everyone. I feel this is extremely unfair. Um, but maybe, uh, to the heart of the problem, I feel like it's actually very discriminatory. Uh, this, I understand residents versus non-residents and paying taxes. Um, very valid thing that were discussed prior to this meeting. Um, however, I don't know why this all of a sudden came about. And I understand that it was maybe some, someone had mentioned something during the party thing. Um, but you know, to just put something out there like this, I mean, we all have, most of us have corporate jobs, and I mean, this just would not fly. Um, the communication was just so poor, and discrimination is just so high. Um, and we moved here thinking that, yes, we would get access to this, um, these kinds of things. So it's really disappointing to see the kind of leadership you guys are are having right now. That is, thank you.
Okay, anyone else online? Okay, so well, okay, um, Ally Kemp Top just told me that members of Parks and Recs are are listening and they're online. Um, so, um, I think there's no one else for for public comment on this issue. What I will say, um, ultimately, is that my preference would be that everyone can participate. Um, I must say, I I appreciate what everyone has come up here to say, um, especially the constructive comments. I know, I I don't appreciate getting threats. I don't, I mean, peo- people are free to say anything they wanna say, but threats of boycotting our businesses, it's not going to help. So, but I do appreciate, um, really heartfelt comments about your children. Um, and that is what concerned me the most, is the impact on the kids. Um, I would like everybody to have access. Our problem is, and I know other towns don't restrict access, but they have facilities. Our problem is, we don't have facilities. And we're left with a situation where people who are town residents are shut out, and they see that people who are non-residents, I I don't, this is not discriminatory. We're not just being found for people who are non-residents, are in the program. So we have a whole slew of people who are residents who complain to us as well. Um, I would love to make everybody happy. I want the kids to be happy. I want our facilities to be expanded so that we don't have this problem at all. But seeing that, and what I did promise was to maintain the status quo so that people weren't caught in a lurch for summer camp this year. Um, I tasked the Rec. Department to see how we could increase our capacity. Um, if anyone wants to think we weren't thoughtful, it took all this time, and they've come back to us and told them that this is a very difficult um thing to do and that they're not able to do it for this year.
And we're short-staffed.
We are short-staffed. So, um, that that is the situation, and that's what we're looking at. So I understand, uh, I mean, there's no discrimination. We we have town residents who are residents and, you know, your residents of other towns. That doesn't mean that we don't consider you part of this community. But somebody, not all the kids are going to have access to our camps. And so some kids will be left out and some kids will be in. And we have a responsibility to our residents as- And we have a responsibility to our residents as well, as our desire to create a sense of community. So that's what we're looking at and balancing out. Um
Well, I grew up in a country that actually had this kind of segregation, I think, I mean, that's where I'm segregated.
There there is uh segregation is a serious matter, I say that as a minority, I don't think that you should use that term lightly.
Segregating for kids.
This this country, this area is divided into towns and municipalities.
Yes.
You wanna tell this to my five-year-old daughter?
That is a fact. Um
I I think I think we're getting a little carried, I think I I think we're getting, I think we're getting a little carried away, this is not segregation.
Okay.
I mean, there there there's there's all kids in one way or another unfortunate, unfortunate to be left out, we've heard comparisons to renters to homeowners.
Also, yeah.
There's working parents at ten o'clock in the morning, my wife works and I work, who can't get on in time, so that, so so a parent who doesn't work can stay home and do that. It's not always, I I I'm just, I'm making a general statement, I'm making, I'm not saying you people, I'm taking a general statement, there's people who are working here. So the spouses at home, so someone is losing out no matter what, someone is losing out, we just can't handle it. So someone like my family had difficulties too. So this is this is not, this is not about renters or homeowners, it's not about sticking it to kids because you're gonna now say the PTA will never let kids use the schools, that's on you, if you wanna do that, that's 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 your decision.
But that's what you're doing, yeah, but that is what you are doing, so good, I don't understand.
Um so 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 you know, we have, we don't have the capacity, we don't have the staff, we'd like to do more. We have to find a way to figure it out, to make it work as best we can, and it's gonna be an imperfect solution and um
But it's always been like, why it's a music, why it's just out.
Why it's a music.
People shouldn't be interrupting you, you didn't interrupt me and it could be deported.
Uh I, if, can I, can we just have a minute, everyone take it down enough, please, because it's not helpful to have us arguing from the dais and people shouting, that's not actually how this works. This isn't usually a Q and A, it's an opportunity for you to come up. We understand, this is really upsetting. Everybody sitting in this room wants all of our children, CCSD, Mount Pleasant, Osning, to be part of these programs. Recently, with the influx of young families, our town camp specifically, 'cause I don't really think this maybe ski trip and town camp, I don't know of others off the top of my head, are really at their max, they're at capacity. It's it's a facilities issue, it's a staffing issue and it is, as many of you are here, there's also people on the other side of this issue who are Newcastle taxpaying residents whose children are now on a wait list while other parents who aren't contributing to the maintenance of the facilities to the salaries of our Parks and Rec staff that are not now shut out. I also wanna just clarify one point. Um it's not free to the town to use Bell School for town camp, that's the the CCSD charges the town of Newcastle, I think annually a fee to use the fields, a fee to use Bell School for camp, that is a town that's uh that's a a cost that taxpayers have to subsidize.
Six hundred twelve dollars a day.
Right, so today I told us it was six hundred and twelve dollars per day for six weeks. But that's just for camp, that's not for all the other things. So it's not like we get to use Bell School, Seven B Greeley for free, that's an additional cost and that's separate from CCSD school taxes, so I just wanted to clarify and I'm sure everyone is upset, we completely understand. Um the intention isn't to segregate or to divide or to make some children feel less than frankly, it's like insulting. For those of you that don't know me, I have young kids, I take advantage of all the Parks and Recs program, I'm a volunteer too. I hear you, we all hear you, we're really upset about this, we're just trying to find a solution. Um we can't expand camp camp this summer, we we wish we could, we can't. We're adopting a resolution tonight to apply for a grant that will put in bathrooms at Amsterdam Park. This is on our radar radar for next summer, we're looking at ways, we're not trying to be uh we're not lacking in creativity, we are having these joint meetings, we are having these conversations. We are doing our best, believe me when I tell you we are doing our best and I just wanted you to know, all of you to know that.
Okay, now we are done with public comment at this point for this issue and we're not, we're not gonna take any more public comment.
I just wanna confirm a question of clarity, what is the policy now, I I'm I'm using earlier, can you just rephrase what?
It will be announced.
If we have a policy, it will be announced, we're not announcing a policy on the fly
Okay, I'm I'm just.
at at during public comment, period.
Okay, so it's uh
Okay, so we are going to turn to other people, excuse me.
Is it in the closing that said it was?
Okay, alright. Uh okay, we're not, we're not going to take any more comments from the, from the audience in this particular way, you know.
We'll, we'll be in there, it will be announced.
We're done with public comment on this particular issue, thank you very much, everyone. Um okay, uh Lisa, you can unmute yourself and I think I know what you're going to talk about and I um
I'm gonna talk about how nice it is to participate in a town board meeting in pajamas.
I'm gonna talk about how nice it is to participate in a town board meeting in pajamas. I love that.
Rubbish.
Thank you. But Lisa, we we um, we're going to talk about the um
Um but no, no, um
Oh anyway, I I shouldn't, I shouldn't.
Yeah, so you know, since um I I think you all know that since serving as town supervisor, I accepted a position as the chief government affairs officer with the combat anti-Semitism movement. And um as part of that job, I reach out to mayors and elected officials actually throughout North America um to combat anti-Semitism. And one of the things that I know I've reached out to this town board about twice is um adopting and proclaiming May twenty twenty four as Jewish American Heritage Month in the town of Newcastle. And we do that much like we adopt a resolution declaring Pride Month or Black History Month, this is for Jewish American um Heritage Month and um I just want to talk about that a little bit, this is not something that should be political, it's really
about that, this is not something that should be political, it's really
meant to acknowledge the invaluable contributions of Jewish Americans to our nation. Uh but it also serves as a powerful statement, especially in light of what's going on uh in our nation and globally um against hate and discrimination and certainly adopting this much like you would adopt maybe AAPI Month, which is also in the month of May, um you would clearly demonstrate your commitment to fostering inclusivity, celebrate diversity and demand mutual respect for all of your residents, so um I don't know if you've taken that up yet, but I did wanna publicly
Yes, but I did want to publicly put that forth and it's something I really would like to see the town board uh adopt this year. Yeah, thank you Lisa, um I just wanted to tell you, perhaps coincidentally, that we uh I have been thinking about all of the heritage months that we have on the calendar. And um in fact, I was going to bring to this town board a suggestion at next week's work session to adopt a calendar of all the uh US federally recognized um heritage months. And Jewish American Heritage Month is a part of that. And to um to start doing that um starting next month, you know, moving forward for for all of them. So um it's um you know, fortuitous that you should come on to talk about this because we are going to be doing that on our own quite independently. And so, but I know that people do talk about AAPI Month is coming up and as these months come up people in the community talk about them and we definitely want to promote a sense of inclusion, a sense of belonging and a sense of support to to all different segments of our community. And so that would definitely be a part of that, so uh we will be, I will be presenting this uh in concept next week, in that next week's work session.
So but you just mentioned that you're gonna present it in concept as a global adopting all of the months, but are you adding to adopt Jewish American Heritage Month?
So but you just mentioned that you're gonna present it in concept as a global adopting all of the months, but are you adding to adopt Jewish American Heritage Month? Well, no, but then So that would mean that moving forward after we hopefully agree to that at the work session, that we would then adopt, you know, start from then on to adopt um heritage months, different heritage months. So next month is is May, it would be May, so the following meeting after that would be May fourteenth which is actually coincidentally a pretty meaningful date, isn't that um Independence?
Australia Independence Day.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So I mean, that might be a very nice date to adopt that um resolution, that proclamation. And I believe that a proclamation is a one-time thing, it's not every year, but every year we would we would recognize um the heritage months, much the same way that we recognize Black American Heritage Months, and I think that the town board had recognized AAPI a a while back, I I think I heard that, we we remember a town board member had suggested that and and the town had, so
A couple years.
We have, we have.
it occurred to me that we had done that for two and that we should do it for all of them. So so the answer is yes, basically, it's a long-winded word saying
Okay, perfect.
of saying yes, but I just wanna make sure that everyone knows that we would be doing it for all of the US federally, you know, recognized heritage months. So we will be happy to do that and I I'm hoping that we can do that on the fourteenth.
Perfect.
And I believe it's AAPI Month as well, but we've already issued a proclamation for that. And but we certainly would recognize them, but I I
No, I I think when we issued a proclamation, it was for that year, it wasn't for May in general, so I think it does need to be moved on every year.
Wasn't for May in general, so I think it does need to be moved on every year. I see. Okay, we'll we'll check on that, but yes, okay.
Um and then one other thing, just in the same vein, um tomorrow Congress is voting on the bipartisan anti-Semitism Awareness Act
Um and then one other thing, just in the same vein, um tomorrow Congress is voting on the bipartisan anti-Semitism Awareness Act
which would codify the IRA definition of anti-Semitism, which this town, which this town did adopt uh when I was supervisor. Um but it would codify that definition entitled six of the Civil Rights Act uh to protect our students and I'm sure you are well aware of everything that's going on on college campuses right now. Um so I would just ask this town board and actually all residents of the community to urge Congress to pass this legislation so that um it's just another class of students that would be protected under the Civil Rights Act.
Do you have any knowledge of whether they're likely to, is there any question that they would would or would not adopt it?
I I haven't seen kind of a free vote tally, but I know it it has, does have bipartisan support.
kind of a free vote tally, but I know it it has, does have bipartisan support. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
So and I I can send you all the uh a letter if you would like, um
Alright.
if you do that.
Um yeah, okay.
Alright, thank you very much.
Alright.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you Lisa, enjoy your Tuesday. Your Tuesday night, okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Goodbye.
Okay, bye-bye. Okay, well that um that will close off our public comment period and now we'll move to our consent agenda.
So um I do apologize, but because we didn't go through the administrative items, I'm just gonna briefly just talk to the board about what these are so that you're aware of them, okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um
Okay. Thank you and yeah.
We've got adoption of of the minutes in the monthly report. Um the next is a resolution in support of the press grant application for the Amsterdam Park septic field installation and athletic field restoration project. Um so the town has, town staff has been working um quite diligently to try to figure out a way to install real bathrooms at the Amsterdam um park and uh we are appealing to uh Assemblyman Chris Burdick and hoping he will sponsor a press grant on our behalf in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to enable us to uh install s- septic field under one of the athletic fields. Uh um then restore the field and install two new bathrooms, which will really make our camp um campus a tremendous improvement. Um next is uh the authorization to approve the letter of support for clean energies communities, this is the first thing that Vic and Thomas spoke about when uh he came before the board tonight. Um the next is the authorization to obtain bids for the purchase and installation of highway materials for non-extended contract items. Um just a a variety of items that we weren't able to maintain the contract prices for for more than a year. Uh the next was an extension of order maintenance materials, specific items that we were able to have a one-year extension on the pricing. Next is authorization to for the annual ECI contractual increase uh for Veolia, this is sort of interesting because we um if we were just to stick with the ECI increase, we would have over a four percent uh increase. But because of the way we um negotiated the contract and thanks to Bart Carey, we are capped at four percent, so saved the town some significant dollars there, thanks Bart. Uh next was an authorization to declare surplus vehicles um and allow them to be auctioned, we're trying to auction off a two thousand and one tractor. Uh next is the um the energy is, it's the same thing. Um next is authorization to adopt the greenhouse gas inventory report, that's the second document that I Kent reviewed with you this evening. The next is authorization
Jill, I have a question about that and the letter because maybe I'm missing it, I'm not seeing it in the resolutions.
Sure. It's on the consent agenda.
Okay, that I'm maybe I'm, I see it, I see it, thank you, I was looking at
You did not.
You did not, okay, I see it, okay, yeah, I got it, thank you.
Okay, got it, okay, terrific, thank you. Next is authorization to accept the donated vegetation removal services, um uh Pro Hill Road, one of the residents um owns Terrapin Tree Care and they'd like to take and just do some maintenance along the front of Pro Hill Road. We're very happy to accept it, we thank them very much. Uh next is authorization to approve the noise uh waiver for into-the-light walk. This is the waiver um for the event that Vicki spoke about earlier this evening. Uh it's on June ninth, um it's it's a Sunday morning, the walk starts at four thirty AM. four thirty in the morning and they are planning on having everyone gather at the gazebo at about six in the morning and they'd like to be able to use light amplification so everybody can hear what the speakers are saying. But needless to say, it's earlier than our noise ordinance allows, so um they're asking for a waiver. You guys okay with that?
What time?
Six o'clock.
Six AM?
It's not gonna be more than a half an hour, it's it's gonna be between, it should be over by seven in the morning, but it's a little
But I understand they're not using the town amplification system, they're using a quiet
They're not using, they're using like a little karaoke machine
Okay.
just so people can hear. They unfortunately they were supposed to, they were supposed to, because
At the end.
At the end.
At seven AM, closer to seven AM?
It's closer to um, seven AM.
Six, close to six AM.
We'll see how this goes.
I I I understood what she was saying, yeah. We'll we'll ask them to whisper, okay? You know what, if it turns out that it it's that it's way too loud, we won't allow it next year.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll we'll try it, we'll ask them.
Just close our protest.
Um they were, they were going to attend the uh Holocaust memorial last night to see how the our sound system worked, but as it turns out, we weren't there, so. Um next is authorization to declare surplus equipment for trading credit, um so this was the, we were trading in the old grinder for a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars um towards a a new grinder, which was seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars, so um this is just the uh approval to declare a surplus and to be able to get the trade-in value. Uh next is authorization to approve third-party inspection services for Newcastle Fire Department um for their uh construction project. It's ninety-five hundred dollars and it's just a pass-through, um we were just trying to figure out the best way for us to be able to um uh pay this third-party bill and so what we're gonna do is establish a um an escrow uh the fire department is gonna pay into it, um the third-party inspectors will give us a bill for exactly that amount of money and it'll just pass right through, we'll pay the bill enough in October. Uh next is authorization to approve the parking software Pango that we had spoken about earlier, we'll be getting a new parking permit system, we're very excited about it. We think our residents are gonna be thrilled with the ease that they can take and renew. Uh next is authorization to approve uh um uh management training, this is uh this is for uh department heads and we've extended it also to uh our foreman. So it's a ten thousand dollar fee, so it's um it's a little bit more than our original approval was, which was seventy-five hundred. Uh next is authorization, final acceptance for the payment Barrett roofs for the DPW uh roof replacement project at the Millwood Water Treatment Plant. The final payment is ninety-two thousand seven hundred twenty-two dollars and twenty-one cents and it includes the retainage, so it's a final payment and retainage. Um we're allowing the Girl Scouts to be at our Chaparral train station to sell Girl Scout cookies. Um and um
Just a season.
Last but not least, uh oh so it's on the dates of May sixth, uh eighth, thirteenth and sixteenth, those are fifth graders. And last but not least, we're asking the board for uh authorization to settle a claim regarding damage to private property for the amount not to exceed thirty-five hundred dollars.
Okay, thank you Jill. Let's see. Alright, so we'll move to our resolutions.
Let me see.
Okay, Holly, do you wanna get us started?
I move to adopt the item one through nineteen, that was listed on the consent agenda, is that right Jill?
Yes.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I move to retroactively approve the payment of claims in the amount of um one million three hundred ninety-two thousand sixty dollars and sixty-nine cents listed on the summary, A P check register and detailed voucher, detailed reports dated April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, checked, printed and distributed to each claimant listed on Wednesday, April seventeen, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ali, Ali, go ahead.
I move to retroactively approve the payment of claims in the amount of four thousand five hundred and four dollar, four hundred thousand fifty-four dollars, three hundred
four hundred and fifty-four.
I know, it's late.
Listed on the summary A P check register and detail voucher detail report stated April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, checks were printed and distributed to each claimant listed on Thursday, April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. Thanks for bearing with me everyone.
Second.
Uh all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to accept the retirement of Christopher Murray from the position of motor equipment operator within the Department of Public Public Works effective May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. The town would like to thank Chris for his twenty-four years of dedicated service, enjoy your retirement.
Wow.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to authorize both you, hi, you should go to quit now for the Department of Public Works, how are you, the annual salary ranging from sixty-one thousand two hundred twenty dollars, seventy-six cents, eighty-three thousand eight hundred thirty dollars, fifty-eight cents, third number to quit the people.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to authorize the hiring of Matthew Coleman Coleman Harris, a physician of summer labor with the Department of Public Works, working in an hour, the rate of twenty-nine dollar, back to May sixth, twenty twenty-four.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One more.
And I move to authorize the hiring of Desiree O'En McPee, the doctor at John. The business student intern with the engineering department for a period of six weeks for a total amount of two thousand dollars, in fact, we made a team twenty, twenty-four.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Jen?
I move to adopt the town of Newcastle Child Abuse Prevention Policy.
As amended.
As amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to adopt a local law to amend provisions of chapter one hundred and eight A stormwater management and erosion and sediment control.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Second.
Um sorry, you need a second?
I did.
Holly seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are hereby adjourned, thank you and with that.